You're going to reopen our meeting and begin Public Works.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's see, we have one item on the consent agenda, and that's another one of those reimbursable work agreements with Fire District Number One for future work that they may need from us and our road crew or others. And then I have, we submitted another one today for the, and this is assigning the final project prospectus for those RAP projects. So, we talked about them last week, and there's a summary there of their paid out reimbursement is at 90% of qualifying costs. And then I also listed the project estimates. The Schrontz Road Bridge is 1,960,000 as an estimate. And then the paving project on Sunnyside Road is 2,580,000. So, those are the two projects that we talked about, and we will be adding the extra points to Sunnyside. Well, let's see, we have two pay estimates. One to James Dean Construction for the Courtney Road Project in the amount of $574,764.48. And then one more to Kirby Nagelhout Construction in the amount of $57,608.47. And on the construction side, nothing really new with Roosevelt or the guardrail project. Courtney Road contractors on schedule. They're expecting, they're scheduled to start paving the lower section September 12th. And they're moving, still moving Mass X on the upper section. Their goal is still to pave one lift on the whole project before we close down for this, and then put in the guardrail in the fall.
Hard rail this fall as well? Or?
On the new. On the new section. Yeah. Uh, let's see. And the strippers will come back here. We're still completing our chip seal work this week, and so they'll be scheduled to come back probably sometime in September to finish up and paint everything that we've chip sealed. On the design side, let's see, Click-At-That Path and the Courthouse parking lots, our crews will be performing much of the work to get those both usable and ready for winter. Some of the concrete work, like we talked about, will be done afterward, but I think we're going to use our carpenters to do what we can to get the ADA ramps in and the basics. So, there's some connectivity and pretty much. No, no. He actually offered, but we. Yeah.
Who did that?
Yeah. I can't say. Yeah, I, we'll get our carpenters there. Yeah, they do good work. They do good for me. Yeah.
Yeah, so I want to know who did it.
Uh, let's see, Rock Creek Bridge, the painter, that's scheduled for next year. We're getting that one ready. Sundell Road, the designers building the map in the right of way so we can set the alignments and get started with that design on that project. Maintenance side, like I said, the crews are chip sealing. The last shot on Horseshoe Bend Road is this week, as well as Old Mountain will be toward the end of the week. So, and then striping after that. So, that means trucks from the West End are actually helping with that work. And then both sides, they're, the people that are left, there's some grading going on at both ends of the county as well. And then this Friday, we have our under bridge inspections on four bridges throughout the county, so they'll be flagging for that work. The UBIT truck that comes out and actually reaches around with a platform to go look at the underside of the bridges.
Will we be able to just do that with our drones? Or will we still need this truck?
They're talking about doing that as an option, setting up drones that'll actually do that, but I don't think they perfected it yet. But it's in the works, so in the future, that's a possibility, yeah. You know, right now, they have the equipment to get people under, either on the platform or they actually have people that climb them with ropes and harnesses, so. Now, that will be something for the future that they're talking about doing, so. And luckily, we only have four of those because they're not cheap when you bring that piece of equipment out. It's expensive, and we do that every two years or required to.
Related question.
Yes.
The little thingies that look like steamrollers but actually have four tires front and back, is that still some kind of a steamroller for that?
It's, yeah, it's a rubber tired roller. Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Okay. On the building, like I said, we're regrouping for the parking lot work to kind of make those usable this winter. Blinds in the Mount Adams Room, we're on time number three reordering those, and hopefully they'll be the right length and material when they actually get here. HVAC units this week are, the sound and the HVAC installers are getting back to us on the fix for those last couple areas that we have. And then we'll get to the wireless bridge, like we've talked about, when time allows. Pioneer Center HVAC units, we're scheduling toward the last week of September, first week in October, that's the slack period again, so we'll get those installed before we get weather on the heat demand side. Radio site? Uh, state is passed, carpenters are moving ahead still. Electricians will be up there tomorrow wiring the building, so it's moving forward. Okay, follow-up issues. So, Middle Road has been a topic on the east side of the county. It's getting a lot more use in the area where the hall route is and outside of that area, as well as some of the other roads. And we're, I think, challenged because our existing agreement doesn't cover some of those things that might occur. And we will rectify that in the next project, but for now, it's a challenge. So, county crews have graded Middle Road from Bickleton down to Schrontz, which is north of the project that's on, the energy project that's ongoing out there. And then they are, they're bringing in equipment, the developer contractor bringing in equipment on Thursday or Friday, and we'll start grading from Schrontz Road south to East Road where the pavement is again. So, it's been a challenge because, like I said, these workers, it's very different than wind, where wind was heavy equipment with a few workers. Solar is very labor intense, there's a lot of people. And, you know, most of our roads out there experience eight to 12 people a day. And now there's, on some of the other routes, shortest route to get home, you know, it's 300 maybe. So, it's very different. And where they're, the timeframe was a year to complete the project, we're going on two and a half now. So, time duration is different as well. So, it's very different, and I think they're struggling with what a lot of the industry and everybody else is getting materials to build and complete things on a timely manner. So, that's, I think, has hurt them completing their project when they want. Anyway, so trying to wrestle with this and how do we, how do we prevent people from causing damage to some of our other roads, namely Middle Road north of the project and Schrontz Road, back over to Dock Road, which is a short, shorter distance.
Can you elaborate on as far as what dam, I mean, these are vehicle, I mean, is it washboarding?
Yes, but, yeah, so.
You put 300 vehicles on a gravel road.
And there, the issue is the, well, the number of vehicles is one issue, probably the bigger one is the speeds. So, they're, they want to get home. It's a long way from home, and this is a road where there's nobody and nothing out here. And so, we've had, the sheriff's got lots of calls as well on people speeding, and he's done some enforcement. And, but, you know, they're unposted 50 mile an hour roads, but can you, should you really go that fast? No, because what's happening is when they go fast, they're just blowing, I mean, literally blowing the crushed rock off the road.
Yeah.
And it's not, you can't recover it because it's out in the brush somewhere. And so, speed's a big issue. So, I talked to the prosecutor about it, and there's the road closure RCW that we're allowed to use in certain instances. If continued use of a road is causing severe damage, you can either close the road or you can set a speed limit. And the speed limit then, under the RCW, it's not just a citation, it becomes a misdemeanor, and it's punishable by up to 90 days in jail or $1,000, up to $1,000 fine. So, much different than a citation for just speeding. So, if you set the speed limit, not close the road, but you reduce the speed limit because of the damage to the roads, using this RCW, the sheriff would have to enforce it obviously, but the teeth in it is much worse and may get people's attention because we can't, there's not much we can do. Because. Under the current agreement, yeah.
So, are we learning our lesson so that the next road haul agreement, we can include ancillary roads that we likely expect them to be used so that they can grade those as well?
Yes. Yes. It isn't just the grading of the road, though. The problem is you blow off all the fines, you can't put them back. And while the road will hold up in the summertime, you've taken the cap off the road. So, now, come the wintertime, you'll break through the road, and then you'll rut the road. And then now we're talking, now you're looking at reconstructing the road. So, yes, but we have, we're going to do things considerably different this time because, again, nobody has suspected there would be this many people. Or going that direction. Going that direction, and that rate of speed, and it's just, it was looked at as wind, and it's considerably different. Yeah, I think last year, the sheriff clocked some people near the landfill in the 90s, 90 mile an hour. So, they're, they're just want to get home or they want to get to work, so it's, it's very different.
Why this started is I continue to have some complaints from out there. Emergency, mine, or Fire District type stuff about how bad those roads are, and it's like we fixed one, and then there's another one, and we don't, the maintenance isn't high enough for the amount of traffic on the road. So, that's what spurred the conversation with Gordy. And he was kind of already on it. So, the next, the next agreements, hopefully when you get those where you think they're right for the next one, let us look them over and whatnot, because I want to make sure that this doesn't happen again with, with any future projects out there, or God forbid, any future projects close to town. But I guess the argument would be, there's how many people showing up to work on this thing every day?
Hundreds.
Versus hundreds. Well, the argument is there's only two jobs.
Permanent jobs.
Permanent jobs. Right, so, but boy, in the last two and a half years, there's a lot of people blowing down that road. So, and my kicker is I don't want the taxpayers, because one of the asks from the member of the public is to pave that road or chip seal that road. 12 miles of road, there's two houses on it, one on each side of the road. That's a hell of an expense for two houses, and I don't want to use taxpayer money for something that I feel the developer should be paying for. So, we need to make sure in our next road haul agreements that everything's covered. And if the county crew has to do the work, that not only we recoup our funds from the county for the county crew, but there's actually some teeth in a, in a fine or something to make it so the, the construction company wants to keep the road up versus has to keep the road up.
Do we know, do we have no ability in our current road haul agreement for amendment? I mean, there's no vague language about circumstances if you miss something?
No. No, only within the road haul, and that's never been an issue for the 10 years we've been using this agreement for several different types of energy projects, so.
Yeah, I guess we learned, I mean, we did with wind, where our first ones were, we had some holes.
Yeah.
That hadn't thought of, and we amended later to fix those, but I don't like, I mean, they should, and I would be curious too if we've, I mean, I guess, don't underestimate having a conversation, if we have a conversation with the contractor, with the, with the folks out there about, you know, you're, you're not being a good neighbor, and you got to get your, you know, you need to be, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of looking at this RCW so we can change, because the speed is what's causing the damage, likely more so than just the volume of traffic.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
But if they're doing 90.
90 miles.
They're already doing double the speed, and you lower it down to 30 or 40, they're still going to go because they don't think there's a single copy.
Right, and that's what I mean, maybe, but there's a, the team approach would be, you know, we talk to the, we enact it, we have a discussion with the sheriff about, you know, this is, you know, my experience with the sheriff is he's always been a good team player about that, and they will put some resources there. And we tell the company, we're not happy about this, and yeah, our agreement, we don't really have any way, but you're, to come after you, but you can voluntarily, you know, make sure you're communicating to your people, this is not okay behavior from you, because we have, make the assumption that we're, everybody's going to follow the rules, and if everybody was following the rules, we would not be having a problem.
Right.
That's the issue is, you can keep changing the rules, but if nobody's going to follow them, it does, we can set the speed limit at 10 miles an hour, it won't make any difference.
Right.
Then there'd be no damage to the road.
We, I have had several discussions with the people managing the project, and.
They just don't care.
We don't, we're not getting, well, they say, once they leave our, employees leave our site, they're.
They're on their.
They're on their own.
Well, that is technically true, but it's not, that's going to make a difference to them when they either don't have workers because they're serving 90 days in jail. Now I'm going to care if I'm a, I just know from, you know, again, I only manage really small projects compared to this, is that I wanted to get along because that's just how you do business, that it's like, I don't say, yeah, screw you, I don't care, you know, I'm never going to be back here. You, inevitably, there will be some interaction, and they're going to remember, so.
Yeah, like I said, I would have hoped that would have worked, but I've been trying that for the last six to nine months and getting nowhere. And I, I talked to the sheriff who said, yes, he would be supportive if, if we enacted some type of speed limit under this RCW and.
I think it would only take one of them to get the fine, to go back and tell their buddies, oh, God.
Yeah.
And, and that's going to slow it down.
Yeah.
And Chief Jensen said that he called you and got on the schedule in September, so we know? Okay. So, okay, because he was talking about, he wanted to come talk about this, so I will, I will call him back with the new information. I also plan on calling Brian Walsh with the company later today and giving him a small piece of my mind.
Right.
About how to be a good neighbor. And hopefully, hopefully they work with us. If not, at least we know with the next road haul agreement, we'll have our, our bases covered.
So, would you like me to pursue the speed limit?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, I think you got to have the tools.
Okay.
I mean, it's not posted, so they don't know, they don't think there is a speed limit.
Yeah.
It's, it's the Audubon of East Click-At-That County.
You're going home.
Yeah.
The only time I've gotten 90 on a gravel road was with Rex.
This was actually paved.
Oh, yeah, okay.
This was.
No, this was on a gravel.
Oh, oh, well, okay, that's understandable. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for our list, except for the historic photos, so I don't know if you wanted me to make more copies for.
I have the book, my plan was to pass it around today.
Okay.
I went through it.
They got time and can sticky note.
I didn't add any sticky notes for a reason.
For anything they kind of liked, so we know what's direction to go and, and whatnot. I did notice they, in the agriculture and industry section, all they did was copy the same historic buildings that they put in the first section into that section accidentally. So, whoops.
Oh, okay. I didn't notice that, I apologize.
Yeah, no problem.
We'll fix that.
So, but, but at least get kind of an idea where to go.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, we have our HR Administrative Services Director, Mr. Van Keen. Yeah, go ahead. Here for your heart.
Morning, Madam Auditor.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, the first item on the list is actually an auditor's item.
It's a joint.
It's a joint between HR and the Auditor's Department, but on the consent agenda today, you have a resolution rescinding, a resolution from 2019, having to do with tracking the hours of exempt employees. It was done for a very specific reason that no longer exists. I don't know if Brenda wants to give you any more background.
We shouldn't ever be tracking exempt hours, ever. So, it's kind of, yeah, we need to get rid of that.
We did it for a reason, or it was done for a reason at the time, and now it's time to go back to what they call the exemption base time cards, which.
Exactly.
Sick leave vacation administratively will be documented, but.
Did we get the information we needed in order to make decisions when it comes to when the exemption numbers start bumping up against these people?
We have some numbers, not everybody was great about doing it. Yeah.
Well, and we were.
Give you what we have.
And we were tracking a significant group of employees when really it was only maybe, you know, a dozen or 15 spread over multiple years that we were, that we were looking at because the, as the.
Well, when it originally came out back then, though. It was going to hit a bunch of employees very quickly, and so now it's slow rolled.
First year, I mean, it was like maybe. Yeah, it was two, three a year over a six-year period, so it wasn't any significant group at any one time, but, so retrospect, we could have just tracked on a yearly basis the ones that we thought could have been impacted, but since then the.
Right, but they've changed that date, they keep changing that date, right?
And the amount.
And the amount of money too, right?
Yeah, it was going to be a significant increase to the, to the salary test, and then it dropped, and it only came up a little bit now, supposedly they're going to bring it back at a higher rate. So, ultimately, we won't know which positions are impacted. And frankly, we don't have any control over it. They'll become hourly, and we'll have to track it. So, it was just, we're looking to see if we could estimate the cost.
I don't think you'll get accurate numbers like you were looking for because it's got to be 100% participation, so just saying.
Right.
We get close.
Well, and, but I mean, weren't we originally looking at it like some people might be at a grade 68 back then that was going to hit, and it's like some people, we might need to bump to a 70 or 71 in order, and that'll save us money versus some people, we just want them to go hourly. And so, you know, it would change those classifications, but I agree, if we don't have the, the numbers by now.
Well, and I don't think, is it federal?
Some of the scenarios, right, some of the scenarios being put forward by the feds would make virtually all of our employees hourly, except for maybe the top, the top grades on our current salary chart. Because remember, overtime is the exception, or the overtime is the rule, the exception is exempt.
Right.
So, they're trying to narrow it back down again. So, again, we won't know until, until they settle on that. Then the decisions will be what to do with those impacted positions. Today's just, it's on the consent agenda, we just wanted to explain it ahead of time and see if you had any questions and.
I consent.
I'll get out of here and you'll have Casey up here, right?
Brenda.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Brenda.
Casey's going to update you on the PEB and DERS rates for 2023.
Yes, so DRS rates, member contributions are not changing. The employer contributions for a few different retirement plans are changing, or excuse me, employer contributions, the member contribution rates are not changing. So, for PERS, two employee contributions are the same, employer are changing from 10.25% to 10.39% effective September 1st. For Piers, it's going from 10.39% to 10.63%, and LEF, I think, is staying the same. So, just a little, it's minor increases, but it will.
Heads up. Heads up.
Do they usually increase the employers without increasing the employee? Does that happen often?
It, it kind of varies, like last year, I think the member contribution rates increased as of July 1st, but the employer contribution rates did not increase, so.
Or DRS isn't on a two-year, they set the rates for two years, and so when that two years is up, then there can be a.
It's you, yeah, it's usually annually that we get the update, and whether it's July 1st or September 1st. So, typically, July 1st are the member increases, and September 1st are the, the employer increases. So, so there is a slight increase.
And there could be another increase in July of 2023 because the two-year rate, that's when they could change it.
Yeah. Any questions on that? No? Okay. We did get the PEB increases for our benefits. They are increasing by 9% across the board for medical dental vision, insurance for employees and employers. So, we've got those rates that we'll get up and have the auditors audit. Employee-only coverage for a full-time member is going to go from $884.84 to $970.10, and that is played, paid 100% by the county, so there's no increase to the employee on that one. It's a difference of $85.26. Employee and spouse coverage is moving from $1,610.51 to $1,782.52. That's going to be a difference of $172.1. Total for employee, it will be an increase of $26. Employee and children coverage is going from $1,429.09 to $1,579.42. That's an increase of $150.31, an increase of $19.53 for the employee. And then employee and family coverage is going from $2,154.77 to $2,391.84. It's a difference of $237.07 and a difference of $46 for the employee.
I think Jen's working on calculating, that's a significant increase if you roll it up across the organization.
That's the, the biggest increase that we've had since we've gone to PEB. The long-term disability, basic long-term disability and life insurance rates are the same, so that will not be an increase for the county, for the basic policies that we pay for the employees. That will stay the same.
Been kind of waiting for COVID, to see if COVID has an impact on the rates, and it didn't last. It could be part of the reason, it's a big pool we're in, so. It's a big pool we're in. So for the rates to go up ten percent for the number of people in this pool, it's significant.
So the employees will see that change on their December twenty-fifth check for January first coverage. Any questions on any of that?
Do you want to run those thing on your wrist?
I just thought about that. Asking me to put my blood pressure cuff on.
Well, not with my stuff, maybe with what he's got next, but no.
I don't know about you, but that's a that's a lot of zeros.
That is.
What do we figure? Maybe quarter of a million? We pay over a million dollars in benefits, so.
That's what I figured, two hundred thousand more.
And then we in the past used to report on the number of open positions, open meaning posted on NeoGov. As Commissioner Soder mentioned, we have a lot of positions that are either unfunded or on people's org charts but aren't. We wouldn't call call this open. So Casey ran a report and we'll start up keeping you updated on positions that are open and that we're recruiting for and then how long they've been open, give us, give you a sense of that. So.
Yes, so we currently have ten jobs posted. We have two that have been posted for over a year, the senior planner and the deputy prosecuting attorney, one, two, or three. We have another position in the auditor's office, the senior accountant, that's been open for almost five months. And the IT system administrator that's been open for nine months. The rest are typical timeframes. The facility maintenance technician has also been open since June. So that's a little longer, I think, than they would hope.
Longer than I expected on that one.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. So so just to give you an update on some of that. And obviously, that doesn't include the vacant positions that departments aren't posting for. So. And yes, the PEB increases doing a report for all of the deductions. In Cuyana, it looks like it will be a little over two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase for the benefits.
And just as I was kind of rolling back. Okay, the next item is the Washington County's risk pool. So we have ninety-nine percent of the final rates in. It's eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollar, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And remember, that's prorated for ten months. So would have been closer to a million for for a full year. The extension that we have so far, we have a two-year offer from the current pool for five hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars that has to be paid all at once. And what I heard back was we don't finance insurance rates. It's the money upfront. So next year, there would not be that expense. It would just be the full cost of the pool. So that brings it in. Again, this is close, but may not be the exact number, one million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. We budgeted one point four million this year, the same, I believe, as we had previous year. So we're just slightly, I just status quo for that. Next year, it should drop to closer to a million, a little less than a million, just having the full year. Now Jonathan is actively seeking two more quotes, one from another company for three years. Because three years is the optimal time to to cover previous claims. And he just found another one that might give us a quote. So that's still to come in. But at some point fairly soon, we're going to have to write a check to somebody to get that coverage nailed down. So so we're right, we're not going to save any money this year. We should save money next year. But again, from my perspective, the service and the technology was worth the change.
Well, I would argue that you are going to save this year because at our old insurance, it was one point four million a year. Plus this year, you're adding a fifteen percent, which would have brought it up to one point five five mil. So.
Was it fifteen percent?
Uh, yeah. Well, it could be higher. They would, they they won't officially announce until the end of the month. With us leaving, everybody else might be well more than fifteen.
Yeah, Dan's right. I was just looking at what we have in the budget.
Right, the budgeted amount, right.
Still a good, it's it's still a good, it's the right decision.
Right. To me, it's still, even with paying the two-year gap insurance, you're still saving roughly two hundred thousand dollars. And next year, you're going to move that closer to saving seven hundred thousand.
Because we've been looking at what?
Fifteen percent, wouldn't that make it one point six?
Close.
Yeah. So. And it's been as high as almost twenty percent in the last lot down the rate. We still had a significant rate increase and they they.
It was like seventeen percent and they bought it down. They're floating the fifteen percent idea, but I think they're floating it with everybody to keep in mind it could be twenty-three percent. So.
I think in next year, so if next year.
We're not there anymore.
Yeah. So next year, if we pay a million dollars, you know, again, where we would have been had we not made the move, you're probably at least half a million dollars.
When you look at, uh, when you look at that insurance and you look at our claims, yeah, we have a couple of big ones, but most of them were chump change. And there ain't anywhere near as many as the other smaller counties. And there, the other counties are every single month and they're in just a stack of them.
On a positive note for the new pool, they've already extended some of their benefits to us, given me access to some of their information from other counties that we can use. PA and I are trying to update some of the processes we use. And rather than wait till we actually join, they're allowing us to to start working on that now. And the new pool has three training or three seminars next year, one being the conference, and then they have two other meetings that we plan on attending so we can learn how to use their tools and and become familiar with their system. So and they've extended, they purchased a virtual driving simulator. And they're training the counties. Each sheriff's department will have a trainer and Carmen will send somebody now. And then we can get this simulator here and have our own trainer. So they've made that available to us before we've paid a dime into the system. So we'll be sending somebody to that train the trainer for driving for the sheriff's office. So good to work with so far. So.
Is it going to save us anything on rates?
I don't think so. I don't think so, but we'll we'll check into that. This year, they had such significant increases, they they were a little nervous, but compared to what we've paid in the last couple of years, it was seemed kind of minor. So. Okay, that is for HR. So for IT and fiscal, Jen, we're in the season of fiscal, so Jen doesn't have any updates today. We're giving her giving her a bye today. IT manager starts September first. Our new IT manager will start September first. We're looking forward to that. Jeff Rowe has ended his casual employee with us and we wish him the best and we appreciated the help that he was able to give us. And Curtis and Shelby are now covering the weekends and paying them overtime when they have to respond, but there hasn't actually been any after-hours calls or weekend calls. So they're looking forward.
We're only paying them if they have to respond. We're not paying them an on-call amount or anything.
No, right. And there hasn't been any. So but I assured them that should they respond or need to respond, then and it goes through me. So I'm the one that contacts them whenever I get a call, they'll be paid for that, as they should. And then the other issue in the IT department is the fleet management software. So we've had number of departments and offices in the test mode for about half of the year, senior services, sheriff's office, planning department, public health. I think we have twelve devices installed in various rigs. It's my understanding that the senior services would like to continue and install it in their buses and their vans. The sheriff's office would like to use the software and install it, I think they said, in twenty-three rigs, mostly the ones driven by the deputies and I think some of the management vehicles. I didn't have a follow-up discussion with Sharon and she can discuss with you during her budget, how she would pay for that, just I think would be included in the grants. The sheriff's office would would prefer it be added to their VRNR rate. So there's pickups are in the VRNR, one hundred and twenty-five thousand a year. This would be roughly two hundred and fifty bucks a year more. And they're willing to do it with no increase in their budget. So they understand that they estimated about sixty-five hundred dollars. We haven't got the final price. The price ranges from twenty to twenty-five dollars a vehicle. Depending on cameras, the sheriff doesn't have cameras because their other system has that. Sharon has cameras with hers. So depending on what they add, it can bump the price up a little bit. Planning's vehicles going to public health. Last time I talked to public health, I don't think they're interested in continuing with the software, but I don't want to speak for them. And adult probation is asked for two of their rigs to be added to the test, one with a camera. Public Works is asked to see a live demonstration of the software. And it's interesting, everybody's using it for something a little different, which is good. It shows the versatility of the software. Sheriff's Department does it for officer safety where they can locate a vehicle that's not communicating. Senior Services, I think, it's my understanding, they use to kind of track and monitor the bus lines. So if they get a call about, you know, where where's the van, they can in real time tell somebody where it's at. And then planning public health would be more on the maintenance and the mileage and the engine hours and that aspect of it. And I think adult probation is looking at it from a safety point of view, transporting juveniles and potentially the litter, the litter crew. So everything we've seen and Jeff and I, we went through two or three, maybe four different softwares, got live demonstrations. The one we picked on, I believe, is on the state procurement. Generally, they don't require a contract. They're month-to-month. Pretty easy to work with the software. It's pretty user-friendly. Each department has assigned one of their staff people. And then they can get in there and utilize whatever reports they want or or features or functions they they like. I think the sheriff's office, again, not talking for the sheriff, would like dispatch, if they're not already doing it, to have access to theirs so that dispatch could locate a deputy through GPS if they needed to for officer safety. So there seems to be some support and desire for some of the departments and offices to to use this software. And I think we're at kind of a decision point where we need feedback from the commissioners about whether you want to proceed with this on a department in-office basis, institution-wide, or for those who are interested in using it, knowing others may test it over time. I also think we've had a discussion about a fleet, you know, fleet vehicle. I don't think that has to wait for for this. I think if we can identify a rig and Gordy can designate a place in the parking lot, then we just, we can check out of the this software. None of the software we looked at had the feature where you could online check out a fleet car. But IT tells me that the same system we use to reserve a conference room can be used to reserve. We just designate a car like a conference room and they could get online and and reserve a car. We just have to designate a place to have the keys. We could do that in our office or wherever else you wanted to do it. And then somebody had to budget to, you know, change the oil and change the tires and the the cost of the vehicle. So I think that's something we can do at any time if you're interested in doing that. I know Mochi mentioned the other day that she's moving their car to public health and then public health didn't have to buy a new vehicle, which is a good deal. But she also said that they're now looking for, would be looking to borrow a rig occasionally when they need one. So I think I think there is a potential need now for a for a fleet vehicle accessible to folks. I know IT'd like one when they go to White Salmon sometimes and they're delivering equipment down there. They take their own cars and but again, it's not a need for for a full-time rig. So.
So again, the reason I wanted to do this was multiple-fold, but it also covers those departments that don't have it in place now. Because is there a cost of, I don't know, ten to twenty thousand total to do the whole project per year? Absolutely. But I also believe you could save that amount of money every year just by having the software. Because you're going to be able to specifically pinpoint what vehicles are being used, what vehicles are lemons and need to be replaced, or which ones don't really have that much repairs and don't need to be replaced early. Right now, we're we're taking the opinion of the person that's driving it that it needs repaired or needs replaced because it has ongoing repairs. And I've found that not always to be accurate. But I would also say we have a number of vehicles that do not get driven. We have a department with two and a half employees that has two vehicles. Those vehicles get driven fifteen hundred miles per year, per year. And we're paying insurance for them. So if we have extra vehicles that we could be using, whether that starts with one. And so my ideal plan is I would like to fully implement this on all the county's vehicles. Public Works, if Public Works wants to do it, that's fine. If it come out of the Public Works budget, that is enough anyway. But put it on our department vehicles, make at least one vehicle that is a a fleet type, anybody can use it kind of thing. And then next year, reevaluate why we're going through the budget or after or before or whatever, all those vehicles that are under our control so that we can see which ones are being driven and when. So that we can better allot allot the taxpayer dollars to vehicles that actually get used and or decide that departments might be sharing a vehicle. Maybe it's not in the fleet where they have to check it out, but now this department is sharing a vehicle with that department. You guys need to coordinate because we have too many vehicles. That's my opinion. So my recommendation would be going forward in in providing this cheap software in all of the vehicles under our jurisdiction.
I think there's merit. I do think there's some, I don't know that I would characterize that we have lots and lots of vehicles that are sitting around not being used. I mean, we do see those. You know, when we do the VRNR rates every year during the budget process, we we get the list, we see. I think there are some that I think people could share. And and I think this is probably a good way to way to do that. I like the approach of let's do it and we can you know, the board can assess it after they've got a little experience. The only issue I can see is people are going to have to coordinate and they're going to have to plan is if you're, it's no different. It's it's kind of the same thing as like why we don't like to use public transit. I want to get in my rig when I want to get in it and I didn't necessarily plan three weeks in advance that I was going to need to move stuff from here to there. And now the the fleet vehicle is unavailable because somebody else did, which again, that's not, that's not a bad thing. I'm just saying people are going to have to get used to that, that, you know, usually, I mean, there's a lot of stuff you know when you're going to need a vehicle. Just if you you have travel or you have a conference or you have some training or you have, and you can get those put into the schedule as early. It's just going to, the system's going to favor those that are organized and manage your schedule over ones that are, oh, you know, I have this thing I have to go to and now there's, there's nothing available because.
I mean, I'm not advocating this, but I have worked places where they were required to check to see if a fleet vehicle was available before they took their own vehicle.
Right, that's the, that's the alternative, right?
And for instance, if IT wants to haul something to White Salmon, yeah, I want them to check their computer to make sure that the car isn't being used for the next three hours because if it isn't, I want them to use that versus their own.
Right.
Now, if that one's not here, by all means, now I'm going to pay you mileage to to go to White Salmon and that's all fine and dandy. But if we have a rig here, I shouldn't be covering.
Right.
And it's it's the same idea if we have an employee going to a conference or whatever else, I would rather have them use the vehicle that's here versus their own vehicle. That's kind of a different discussion on whether we wanted people going to conferences that mandate that you have to try to use the county vehicle or if you still want to use their vehicle. That's a discussion for another day, but
The good news is.
Be option available to them if they
Yeah.
want to use it.
The good news is from the from the office department side is two of the three biggest fleets would like to use it. Public Works is looking into it, so they would look at it more from a financial perspective and and different from how the sheriff would use it. And then the rest are just scattered throughout the offices and the departments. And I think we would see efficiency. Some we may find out some departments have a season where they use rigs a lot and then another season where they don't and may or may not coordinate with another department. So but it's going to be a a learning curve for everybody, I think. And starting out with one rig, I think we we would see.
What happened to the public health vehicle that didn't get replaced? Well, it got replaced with this hand-me-down. Are they now running an extra vehicle within their department? You see, I also have a problem with that because, yes, you're not adding a vehicle to the VRNR, but you are still, now you're maintaining an extra vehicle. You still have oil changes and tires on the vehicle you didn't get rid of.
Right.
So you are. So you are adding an expense in that department by not decommissioning the vehicle that you were going to replace. So that's a conversation for this board going down the road, is whether we're going to allow departments to gain expenses by keeping extra vehicles versus decommissioning them. And I would also like this board to have to look at vehicles that are being decommissioned and approve them before they get a new vehicle, but.
I, I think we do. I mean, you can't, you can't get a replacement vehicle unless you're authorized to.
Well, Public Health's got one.
No, they were going to purchase.
Right, right, but I'm saying we should be able to look at the vehicle.
But again, it's still requested, that's not just automatic.
So my, my take on that would be, I would like to look at the vehicle they're trying to dispose of, to verify the need. If the need is there, fine. If the need isn't there, that might be the fleet vehicle that they can use when they need it. I mean, if they're using it on a, something that they're only driving 300 miles a month, why do you need a vehicle? You check out the vehicle that's here. So I think there needs to be more oversight in our vehicles, is I guess my point.
I don't think we need to put this software on every vehicle. I think that there's people who may not need it. People that, you know, they have a good system, and they manage their system, and they manage their vehicles. I think every year, we already get the information on how many miles each vehicle's driven when it comes to the ERNR. So if that's your big thing, that you're going to get off of that system, we already get that information, and you don't have to spend $250 to do it. I think if these departments that want to have it, and they can fit it into their budget, that sounds great. But I don't like pushing things on everyone, especially when now they're going to think that Uncle Christopher is going to be watching their vehicle all the time, and whether they're driving it. And I don't like spending, wasting money if it's not truly needed. When it comes to the fleet vehicle, or fleet vehicles, I think sooner or later, we'll need probably more than just one. Especially for just, you know, you're around the county driving, whether it's, you know, some of these smaller departments. One thing I think we have to look at, though, is that some of these vehicles, like if you went to a full fleet system, we have all these grant dollars that come in from all these different areas, and some of those grant dollars get put towards vehicles inside that department. And so if it was part of a fleet vehicle, you'd have to change on how that's going to operate. Because I know, like with Sharon, I don't think, you know, with how she buys her vehicles, likely you couldn't loan it out to IT very easily.
No, that's true.
So, so there's a lot more pieces to that vehicle-moving puzzle. But I do firmly think that having a fleet vehicle, if it's as easy to create or to check it out as it is to create a Google Meets thing, I think that's, that's something everybody can learn. Though some people still can't learn how to use Google Meets.
I may regret asking for this, but, so we have all vehicles, not all vehicles, and merit. So going forward, what is the direction of the commissioners?
I mean, yes, for all the vehicles under our control.
Just trying to get some, so we know. Because the company's not going to let us be in the test mode forever, they've been very easy to get along with, but impede for any of their software, or any of these things for six months or so. So just having some direction for the departments or the offices.
Before you go on to try to get clarification on where we're going, the other thing that I forgot to mention, is I think you have cost savings when it goes time to auction off this vehicle, because you can now print maintenance records, and attach those to the pictures in the auction, where buyers can look at the car and see what it is, and they're not just assuming every car is a pile of junk that they're buying for $1,100. So you're going to get, I think, I believe, you're going to get a higher resale value by showing maintenance logs on your resale. Anyway, side note.
Just to confirm, as far as what I'm talking about, most of my merit was based on the fleet vehicle. As far as the software, I'm, I'd say I'm, I'm, I would need to be convinced as to why, what is it going to do that's, we're not, that's not getting done now? I mean, there are maintenance logs, there are, is there, is there some savings or something that comes that will offset the cost to do it? And I'm, and I'm ambiguous or ambivalent on it.
The current way we have it now, and have had it for years.
Or is it more of a management tool for you?
It's all of the above, because the current way you have it now, you have vehicles and departments that drive them 1,500 miles a year, and they still have them. Why is that vehicle not being shared? Why are you paying for insurance on two vehicles when you can really just have?
No, no, I'm not, you're talking about the fleet stuff, I'm talking about the software to manage it. Because they seem like two, they're, they're not necessarily connected, or they don't need to be connected.
Two separate softwares. There's the tracking software, that whole thing that you plug in, and then there's a fleet management software package.
I think that.
Clarification, I don't, it's one chip that goes in, that's it.
Yeah, you plug it, they plug it into the, it's called a dongle, and then it gets plugged into the. Right, but can you, do you have to have that to have fleet, a fleet vehicles?
Oh, no, the fleet having, I mean, one available.
Yeah, having sharing vehicles and all of that stuff.
My point, we can do that now, with or without the fleet software.
But the big question of the day is, or at least what I'm bringing forward to you, is direction on fleet software. You know, where we plug this into the different cars, and then, I agree, some are doing a very good job, but it's the extremes. Some departments maintain their vehicles in offices very, very well, some don't. Some have horrible tires, and dead batteries, and oils haven't been changed for a long time. Others, very conscientious, have somebody assigned to deal with it. I think fleet management software will, will give you all of that data for all of these. It's singly.
So who's going to manage that, though?
Well, the.
Because right now, that, I'm sure we have a policy right now, that says, you get your oil changed, you get your tires, you make sure the batteries, you do all that stuff.
Not sure it's a policy.
Well, whether, it's certainly an expectation. If I have a vehicle, if I'm having a county rig, I'm assuming it's supposed to be maintained. So unless this, so that means that expectation is there now. How is this changing that, other than the information will all be available? And I guess the board is going to be looking at that and managing that? Maybe it's like, oh, you're.
I would say twofold. So the supervisor, that's, or the director, whoever that is that's looking at it, will be able to know maintenance on the vehicle, for one. The maintenance will pop up to be a reminder for the driver of the vehicle.
Okay.
You will also, again, have maintenance records where they're easy to find, and not in our weekly bills, and now hiding in the auditoriums of someone, on what expenses went to what vehicle.
Okay.
If I go to WSU and say, yeah, I'd like the maintenance records for the last two years on your truck, how easy is that for them to pull me? Good luck with that. And I think also, if I went to WSU today and said, hey, I need one of your trucks, they're going to have a temper tantrum, because they're going to say, we use those trucks constantly, every day of the week, and we can't get rid of one. Well, with the fleet management software, you now have documented proof on what day of the week, or what week, or what gets used when, which is why I said, reevaluate next year. If you find there's no need, cancel it. If you find you remove.
To answer your one question is.
You might still be able to cancel it. But at least you have proof when you're talking to the department, and I, Brenda's going to kill me. But if you have a vehicle that you're using for an entire month to pick up ballots, that's fine and dandy. Check the vehicle out for a month, you have them. But if, is it being used the rest of the year? And maybe it is, maybe it isn't, I don't know. But if it's being parked for months on end, I mean, I see cars over in this parking lot that haven't moved in weeks. Why are they not, what's going on? Can we, can we, we don't have the data to be able to, it sure hasn't happened in the past, anyway, to be able to confront somebody sitting at that desk and saying, why do you need that vehicle 12 months out of your.
So how we set it up now is, the IT manager and I are the administrators for the software. Each department, so we have access to everything. Each department or office that has, that has designated somebody, which they do now. Sheriff's Department has a fleet manager, Sharon has somebody that takes care of her fleet. That person now has this, they have access to their vehicles that have this piece of equipment in it. And so they can track, and they can turn it on and turn it off. Some of them use more than others, they can have the maintenance on there. Some use GPS, some don't, some look at the cameras, some don't. So each department, on their own vehicles, can, can set it up the way they want it, and use the software, covers much more than we probably ever use. So each way it is now, is each office or department can, can use whatever features they want to use for their fleet, depends on what they're trying to do with it. I know Aaron was, we were laughing at Aaron, because they had their setup to tell him when the, when the gas tank needed filled up, and it would drive him nuts, that you have a half a tank, you have a half a tank, and, you know, so that, but they turned that off, because they can just look at the meter. Because if you get somebody driving a rig and they don't fill it up, they come in, park it at 5:00, and don't put gas in it, the next person that comes, maybe 5:00 in the morning to go somewhere, the rig's out of gas. So, you know, so they can monitor fuel consumption, and then they can monitor if there's warning lights coming on. You know, it's plugged into the same thing, they plug in the computers when they take it into the shop to run the diagnostics. So it can track warning lights, you know, if there's an engine problem. So right now, each department or office can kind of customize the features they want to use of this software.
So I guess the other question is, is if we would make this mandatory. Commissioner Christopher, are you saying that we're going to add this to each one of them's budget, that they now need to budget for? Even if they may not want it? Or are we going to do this centrally located, and it's going to come out of IT or something else? Because we just had the conversation that, you know, the sheriff's department has the money for it, they can do it. The senior services has the money.
Because you just put $200,000 back into it, and then you're arguing over $20,000 through the management software. So I don't, I, this budget does to me, where it comes from, I don't care. I'm a yes.
I mean, the money's not insignificant, but, I mean, it could, I like the sheriff's thing of just put it in the VRNR rate, where that's part of the cost of the vehicle, it's, it's embedded in there. We're still paying for it. It's not like, we're not, and let's, let's not say we're not. The thing that, I guess the piece that's concerning me is that we, and it's, it's not a bad thing, but it is that we seem like we're really focused on, like we want to manage everything. We want to manage everything, and we have, it's like if a director has a vehicle, that the oil's not getting changed, and there's tires not put on, that's their job to have that done. It's like, what do we have all these directors and managers for, if we're going to just manage everything? And if you have a vehicle that you're not driving, and you can't explain to me, that's kind of on you. And that's the part, again, I understand you're looking for data, so that you can do your job, so that you can manage. I'm just concerned is that it does turn into, oh, I'm going to be, I'm going to be looking at your maintenance logs, you know, every month, and seeing what you're doing. And it's like, eventually, you know, we're just, I just worry, we just keep diluting what we have directors and managers to do. And, and that's a, that's a philosophical thing, it's not, it's a, it's an approach. I have a different approach. I have always been, I hire good people, I trust them, I let them do their thing, until they screw up, and then I'm on them. But other than that, I'm not. I, I, I assume positive intent, that people are competent, and they're doing their job.
Right, I guess what I'm saying is, no, I'm not going to go look at people's maintenance log, but when somebody comes in and they say, hey, we would like to replace this vehicle, because it's a lemon, and it's constantly breaking down. I would like to go, great, give me a week, let me look at the maintenance log.
Right.
And when I see the maintenance log, and see this broken down three times in three years, and it was a small change, and the total repair combined was $2,000, and you want a $40,000 new car, when there's only $60,000 on this?
Yeah, I keep, I think I have a different perspective, and I think you're, you're advocating for a solution to a problem that I don't see that exists. I have, I, I don't see it, I have not, I have not, that I'm aware of, that we generally, it is not, oh, everybody, everybody that wants one gets a new vehicle, or they're in here, oh, that rig's only got 60,000 miles, but by God, it's my turn, and I get one. I don't know that we've ever done that. Do we have vehicles that we, what's that?
The one I'm speaking of got replaced.
And to your point, you know, the, the elected officials and the directors are all working, elected officials and directors. They all, they all have a thousand things to do. If this gives them, there's some that have good data, this, this will give all of them good data. So to your point, you shouldn't have to be the one to say, well, gosh, why are you asking for a new rig? Or don't you need a new rig? They're all going to have this data, and like they do now during the budget, bring it forward to you, and say, well, we're scheduled for a new rig, but, you know, we ran the report, and it looks good. Or since last year, this rig's lost a transmission, and, you know, they will have the data.
A year ago, let's say Mochi, thought she needed this vehicle, but now with this chip, she's realizing she really doesn't need this vehicle anymore. She's going to voluntarily surrender this vehicle, if there's something else that they can drive there one day a month.
All right, but I don't see it, I didn't see it as turning over the fleet management to the commissioners or any single department matures now, right? It's giving a better tool to the folks that are trying to manage their vehicles, whether it be one or 50, and get them better data, and give, give them better information when they come forward as part of their budget or their vehicles. And then you will have the ability to roll up on a fleet-wide management, to look at, you know, what's the average mileage on our, on our rig, and that kind of stuff. But I think it'll empower them with better data, and provide them some tools. Right now, they may have somebody who's got it written on their calendar, go change the oil, or we need to rotate the tires, and people get busy, and we're short-staffed. Every single department and office is down at least one person, in most cases, some more than that. And so this just automates it, it gives a sense of text, it sends a, pops up on their email, and it just makes it a little bit easier to manage these, these.
Right, and I guess I'm not arguing that we put this into place and use it for the next 500 years. I'm arguing that we put it into place for one year. If next year, somebody comes forward, and there's a department that argues they don't need it, they don't want it, we're looking at the data, and we feel they don't need it or don't want it, take it out. It's fine, it's, it's, but I think with some of these departments that fight tooth and nail for their vehicle, we do not know how often, or when, or what days of the week it is being used, or whether it can be shared. Every department, every elected in this county has their own little siloed, don't take from me. Give me more mentality, and it's just government.
And I think to your point, Commissioner Soder, is they all know their vehicles, and they probably all know when they're being used, and when they're needed, and the utilization. But they don't know about the other two departments, or the other two offices. So there's, there's no overarching look at the use of the vehicles. They all can tell you, I'm sure, on their department or office, but how compares to another office, to see if there's the ability, like Mochi, to share a vehicle. They wouldn't have that data right now, unless they called up and talked to another department, and so. I look at it, how you, it's just data. And I'll confirm this, it's my belief, there's no contracts for this, it's month to month, basically. And so at any time, a department, a office, or the commissioners could pull the whole thing out, and we wouldn't be in a, a contract basis where we'd have to pay a penalty, or, or run it out for a full year.
Right, and we may find that, say, an economic development vehicle only gets used two days a week, well, that should be the one that Mochi shares. So now, hey, you're sharing with them, and set up your scheduling over there, and you don't have to worry about this one in our parking lot over here. You now got rid of the vehicle. My argument's over, thank you, guys.
All right, you convinced me, anyway, as far as I'm willing to try it, as far as to get the data that is, so that the managers can use that. I mean, and ultimately, there's some oversight as well, but I'm very cautious, I'm, I'm, I have concerns about.
Where's the money coming from?
It goes on the VRNR rate.
Is that what you want to do?
That's what I would do. I would adjust the, it's, it's just across the, that's, it's part of the expense of the, of the vehicle.
But still.
That's not really, that's not really replacement.
We're paying for it month to month. We got to pay for it every month. Are we paying for the service out of the VR and our fund?
Yeah, that's a good point. It's not really maintenance. I mean, it's not really replacement. So no, no, I don't, VR and R is not the right place. That's.
So again, we're going to need a supplemental, where is it going to come out of? We've already had, kind of had that conversation with two departments that said, we'll find the money, whether it's grant or whatever. So they plan on paying their portion out of there.
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. I think we estimated seven months ago that if, not counting Public Works, if we put one of these in every vehicle, it was roughly 25,000 bucks a year. Senior Services and the sheriffs are more than half of that number. So, so then you're talking about potentially $10,000 to $15,000 spread out over the other departments and offices that you have to come up with through a supplemental, if that's what you, I mean, I haven't heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, any opposition to the departments or offices who would like to use it, being able to use it, the sheriff's department, senior services.
I guess I would argue that any of them that have a vehicle have a bars number for that vehicle that's called maintenance and they have money put aside in there just in case. And if that vehicle that has a maintenance fund of $1,000, if 250 of that is going to this chip, well, if you need more than the other 750, let me know. That would be the supplemental. I would just add it into their maintenance of the bars number under maintenance.
I think the best thing we've, we've learned, whether it's the chat function or whatever, if we're going to make a decision for all these department heads, I think the department heads should have the right to come in and say, we want it or not want it. Because it sounds like one department doesn't want it. So I think it's something we can put over on a workshop, but we can definitely let the sheriff's office and seniors that are wanted, that's willing to pay for it to move forward on their section. But it's up, it's up to you. You know where both of us stand.
I got yes and no, and I have a baby. It's like I. Yeah, why don't we, I'll, I'll support starting with the ones that wanted, the two departments, and then the rest of it, let's have a discussion about it. I do see some benefit to having continuity across the whole fleet. If you're gathering data, it's nice to have the whole data, not just some, but I don't think we need to. And then when are we talking about implementing this tomorrow? In the, obviously, this is September, I mean.
We put it off till January 1, if we, if we wanted to. The company's been fairly flexible. I mean, adult probation wants to test drive it, Public Works still wants to see the live demo, so.
Well, I, I'm okay with the, you know, sheriff and seniors, they can implement it now and the rest, you know, maybe the other, we have the conversation, because I agree with Commissioner Anderson, we make these proclamations without having any discussion with the departments, that there, there probably are some perspectives out there we are unaware of. I'm less concerned about a department that does not want it, as far as I want to have a, why don't you want it? Why, what is the, you know, make your case as to why? I don't want anybody gathering data on my, on my vehicles. Let's talk about that.
Okay, so I can, I can go with that. Let's say, let the ones who want it have it and schedule a workshop for everybody else to have a chat.
Probably after the budget, since the next.
Yeah.
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 We're good with that. Okay. I don't have.
Hit to consensus, it just takes us a while.
I don't have a vehicle, so. All good. All right. Thank you. Solid Waste Department. So the, the review is ongoing and we should have a report or I should have a draft report in about a month. So I met with, met with her and provided all the documents that she needed and, and the focus of where we, where we want to go with that, so.
Are we still getting bills from like the Sentinel? Because I'm looking at the Sentinel right now and it says, be a little litter getter hero, Salt Clickitat County.
So we still pay for, we still are in the ads rep.
We are still, okay.
Yeah. Ecology called me, so, and we knew this was coming, you know, during this review period, we haven't been delivering on the grant deliverables. And so they're probably going to move some of the, of the money to other grant recipients as opposed to just, you know, have us end up with unused funds. I don't believe that's all of the funds, probably just for the quarter, but I've requested a meeting, Michelle and I will be meeting in September to discuss that. And, you know, they don't want the funds to, to be unused when other counties may have the ability to use those funds. So that's not unexpected. Horse Thief, Landville, post closure, I did reach out to the head of that department and re-engaged in a discussion. He said his department is all new folks, so David Kavanon and I will be having a Zoom meeting with, with Ecology and their team to discuss the post closure of Horse Thief. Horse, the ecology's been very consistent over the last five or six years of what needs to happen. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. Basically on the vents, you know, fence them off, extend them above the ground and then do annual air quality testing with a handheld device or have the, put a berm in, a small berm and have a perforated pipe run through that and then they just disperse, any gas will come up, just gets dispersed. And that's basically a permanent fix, a one-time, a one-time deal. You don't have to monitor it that way, it's my understanding. And then groundwater testing, they just requested another round of testing and they wanted to be part of it. And then if the groundwater comes up, okay, then we're done. But they have not wavered in five or six years on that, even provided basically a drawing of what the berms would look like. We would have to go out and get an engineer to help us design those berms. So we're going to meet with them in September. I predict they're going to come back with the same. That's what has to happen. Then we can, we can be done with the post closure of Horse Thief. So, so more on that as we meet with them again. And in the proposed budget, I've moved some funds around to potentially cover that, that one-time cost of that, should you decide to proceed with that. And then I was notified by Ecology that January 1, we're required to have a compost procurement ordinance based on, it's, only applies to counties over 25,000 citizens or if you have something like dirt huggers. So dirt huggers and Public Health agreed that we would be subject potentially to this ordinance. So Public Health has actually drafted an ordinance and sending it to the PA for review, then ultimately to you for review. But because we have dirt huggers, it throws us into that category of requiring a compost procurement ordinance that has annual testing, I mean, annual reporting requirements and, but I sent it to, I sent it to Mochi and she said it's not her, but Aaron said that it would apply, it would apply to, to Public Health because they have something to do with dirt huggers, some, some oversight or, and so she's already, they've already drafted a potential ordinance.
Interesting, that is, that's an example of unintended consequence, where you don't.
Or unfunded mandate.
Well, that's most everything, but.
Yeah, this ordinance would plan for the use of compost in following categories, landscaping, construction, post-construction, soil amendment, applications to prevent erosion, filter stormwater runoff, low-impact development and green infrastructure, develop strategies to inform residents about the value of compost, how the jurisdiction, we use compost in our man, and have a management plan. And we must submit a report covering the previous year's compost procurement activities on total tons of organic material diverted throughout the year, volume and cost of compost purchased throughout the year, source of compost.
It's pretty.
But the trigger is because we have a composting manufacturing facility in our county.
It says, based on the data we have for Clickitat County, we show that you will be required to adopt the CPO based on having a drop-off organics location in the county dirt hugger. I did find it interesting. It says, our attorney general has determined you're, you're subject to this, because ours.
It's also our attorney general.
Ours, ours too, but it's supposed to be your attorney general. But it, it wasn't a surprise to Public Health.
The attorney general.
But it wasn't a surprise to Public Health and she has actually drafted an ordinance that would, that would comply with this. So it's not to my area of expertise, but Mr. Kavanon, Ms. Quinn are taking the lead on that thankfully. So that's it for me. Is there any other questions about IT, fiscal, solid waste or HR?
Or anything else?
Or anything else?
No, sir. Good update. Thank you. How you doing with your ball?
Oh, he starts talking about the recycling thing and all the work that has to go into that. It's like, oh my God.
There was two stress balls.
Composting.
Good thing I know.
I pride mine out of my.
Tune on a stress ball right now.
I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to recess for lunch back at 1:00.
I'm in second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. See you all shortly. Good afternoon. We are going to call the regular business agenda of the Clickitat County Board of County Commissioners to order. Let the record show, all three commissioners are present and we will begin with our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the business agenda with one add-on under new business, the RAP Rural Arterial Program Grant Application Final Prospectus for the replacement of Shran's Road Bridge and Sunnyside Road Resurfacing Project.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the business agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Did anybody have any issues with the minutes that?
I wasn't here for the 23rd, so I will leave that one to you. I did send edits for the 25th, a couple of typos.
I had some edits, nothing significant for the 23rd.
Okay. Would you want to make a motion?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the commissioner meeting minutes for August 23rd and including the workshop minutes from August 25th.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next up, we are going to move into citizen comments. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. And as always, we will begin in the room. If there's anybody who would like to provide public comment. Come forward, please. Make sure that it's green.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Commissioner Christopher, it's good to see you well.
It's good to be well, sir.
I bet it is. It's amazing. It's great. Dave Barta from Goldendale. Yesterday, I had the chance to speak with the Akama County Board of Commissioners regarding the continuation of their moratorium on the placement of industrial, new industrial solar facilities. The Akama's Board of Commissioners is working to develop ordinances that protect their citizens from unrestricted industrial solar facility siting. Others spoke as well, including members of the North Akama Conservation District and the Akama Clickitat Farm Bureau. Commissioners McKinney, Anderson and Lindy were receptive and appreciative and recognized how industrial solar has the potential to affect the livability of their county as well as other quality of life issues. The Akama Commissioners also spoke with Tommy Carroll, who's their planning official. He's tasked with laying the groundwork for those solar ordinances. The thing Mr. Carroll and the board members talk about a lot is that they get one shot at this. It's vital they do it right and they're going to take the time that it takes to do it. Mr. Carroll also said they're communicating with Benton County and aligning work with them wherever that's possible. I think it presents a possibility of perhaps a regional approach to the industrial solar issue. I invite you as commissioners to reach out to those adjacent counties. Perhaps you already have, I'm sure you probably have. Maybe reach out and see what regional commonalities might exist in this circumstance. I'll be honest, it, it appears that the Akama Board of Commissioners is advocating for their citizens more seriously than we are here. In my prior employment, most of you know I've had a career in schools, I had individuals who persistently shared their opinions that I or the school were not doing something that they, that needed to be done. I remember one case where I frankly grew pretty weary hearing the same thing. Then I stepped back and I said, okay, everything else aside, what's best for the student? And I had to admit that as tired as I was of hearing the same thing, we could better serve that student if we adopted some of the ideas that I was so tired of hearing. Just because somebody's loud, it doesn't make them wrong. I'm not in any way advocating shouting opinions or treating conjecture like it's truth, ever. That's not me. Truth is truth, there's no substitute. I am saying that the circumstance here is similar to the county north of us and the county east of us. I encourage you to keep the issues that affect Clickitat County citizens, in this case, industrial solar development in an agricultural area. At the forefront, focus on the right thing in spite of whatever noise might be right in front of you. I appreciate the work you do. I realize public service is challenging and difficult. Thank you for the time to share my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Barta. Next, we will go online. Is there anybody who would like to provide public comment online? Star six, turn on your phone, turn your mic on or turn your video camera on, raise your hand. Gabrielle Gilbert.
Hi, thank you for this time. I want to talk about daycare. I want to talk about the, a childcare facility and the fact that our childcare desert is a problem that needs to be addressed. I feel that we are at a moment in time where there is discussions happening. I have been advocating in front of the White Salmon City Council and the mayor, Marla, to have an honest conversation about a daycare facility. The problem is that there is so much noise around daycare and nobody addresses. The elephant in the room is that you have to put skin in the game and you have to open up a facility. You have to bring together all the major players and elected officials and all of the industry and the hospitals, and you have to have a true discussion about the importance of childcare in the region. And it is so connected to economic growth. You cannot talk about affordable housing and caring about your businesses if you don't have childcare in the same sentence. I am not, you know, I am not ignorant to the fact that if you cared about children and families, we wouldn't have this conversation because daycare facilities would be around the county. Care about money then. You care about money, then you will look at the economics that is the driving force that gives you affordable, accessible, available daycare. And that you have on your roster, in your county books, Lorena Lowell working for you. She is a woman who has broken ground and made daycare facilities happen. And with that resource, I want this conversation to be real, that you are looking at opening a facility. You sit in a $5 million building that the taxpayers built for you and that the fact that no room exists for childcare is a testament to how much you are blind to the necessity. And it is time for us to all open our eyes and realize that daycare is an integral part of an economy and the success of a county. Right now, Olympia recognizes rural counties in the state of Washington are daycare deserts and grant dollars in the hundreds of thousands are left off the table because you do not put skin in the game of an actual facility. And I'm asking for that to change. I'm asking that all of you, each and every one of you, county commissioners. I'm asking that all of you, each and every one of you, county commissioners, come talk to Marla, come talk to city council members, come talk to industry leaders, come talk to the CEOs of the hospitals, and start having real conversations about breaking ground on a daycare facility. And it is overdue, and it is time, and we are in a daycare crisis. And I've been in this gig of daycare provider for over 15 years in Clickatatt County, and I'm telling you, you are in crisis. So do something meaningful, and meaningful is break ground, ribbon-cutting, break ground on a facility. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing from you. Jake, you represent my district. Come down to talk to Mayor Marla. Come and have a discussion, please. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Back in the room. Is there anybody who would like to provide public comment? Okay. Online. Is there anybody who would like to provide public comment? 0088.
Yeah, this is Delbra Eldred, Goldendale, Washington. And have you guys ever thought about the impact, the negative impact that the solar is going to have on this county? And because, you know, the thing is, is that you guys don't seem to care about the future of this county because every developer that comes along waltzes into this county. You guys have your arms out, welcoming them in there, no matter what the, before you ever figure out how much damage they're going to be doing to this county. So, you know, there's no consideration on your guys' part about the citizens. You're all in bed with the developers, as it seems. And that is, you know, I don't know really why you ran for office when you don't want to represent and protect the county, what you're doing there, unless it is for individual benefits. But, you know, the thing is, is that you guys are, should be held accountable for the future of this county, what you're doing to it. And that's, and one other thing is I'd like to bring up is Mr. Consella constantly said, you guys, when somebody asks a question, you should answer it. And I don't care if the comment hour or comment time has to go an hour, hour and a half. If you guys figure your wages by the hour, you're one of the top paid people in Clickatatt County. And you can, you can adjust your schedule to extend comment time. And I, you know, but the thing is, is if you do, you're going to get some hard questions that you don't want to have to answer, and you're going to be responsible for what you say when somebody is presenting the facts. And but that's what you need to do. That's what you should do, is allow a question and an answer, a discussion. And like I said, even if you have to extend the comment time so people get answers of exactly what the decisions and policies are going to be for these commissioners are going to make. And that's my comment, so.
Thank you, Mr. Eldred. I'm sure someone will respond to your comment. Okay. Back in the room. Good afternoon.
Morning, Commissioners. Or afternoon. It's afternoon. Well, I'm not, I'm not really expecting a response because I'm not really going to give you guys a question. But what I am going to say is that you don't make yourselves look good by making other people look bad. And of course, you're the PA. That's his job. So with that being said, there have been a couple of rumors going through the rumor mill. And being on the outside now, I get to have an opportunity to actually speak to those if I choose. And also with radio and broadcasting, there have been a couple of things said about why I have been terminated from my position. And I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't because something was forgotten because if that's the criteria, then all of us would be out of a job. But I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, that you are not to be saying anything until after the period is up for me to litigate. So with that being said, you know, I think that, I think that we are where we are. And I'm not denying you an opportunity to be who you are, but you guys can't deny me who I want to be at this point either. And so I just wanted to bring that up, that I don't like the things being said. And I would prefer that they not be said in the future, just as your PA would. So with that, I will let you guys get back to business. And I think the people online don't understand that you guys are actually here to make sure that the county is ran with the best economy in mind and not the science. That's what you guys hire scientists for. So moving on from that, I will let you guys get back to your work.
Thank you, Ms. Irving. Is there anybody else online who would like to provide public comment? Evan 211.
This is Greg Wagner with CEES. One of the primary responsibilities of the Commissioners is the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens. I believe it was in 2011, they had a marijuana moratorium. The Planning Commission reviewed it, recommended that the county commissioners at that time ban marijuana because it posed a danger to the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens. 2021, May, we had a solar moratorium. Everybody testified. Hundreds of people testified, whether it was signing a petition or sending an email, handwritten letter, stood before you and testified. Majority of the folks were against solar development in the county, and you ignored them. Now, you've signed off and rescinded the moratorium because you didn't find that solar endangers the citizens' safety, health, and welfare. And I'd like to ask you, how could marijuana endanger the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens when solar with the toxic solar panels and lithium-ion batteries that spontaneously combust, explode, and release deadly fumes isn't a danger to the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens? Maybe you Commissioners could explain that one to me. You had an opportunity in May of 2001 to do the right thing and enact solar ordinances. You didn't even have to write them because we've already written them for you, but you failed to do that. You don't represent the citizens of the county when it comes to solar. You did it May of '21. You had the opportunity to write the ordinances, enact the ordinances, accept our ordinances, but you didn't do it. Now we can look at Yakima County Commissioners. They took it upon themselves to enact a solar moratorium. They didn't need a group like CEES or citizens speaking out, forcing you to enact the moratorium. And theirs is going to stay in place as long as it takes for them to adopt protective ordinances, unlike you gentlemen. I believe you failed to do your job with respect to protecting the citizens of the county when it comes to solar development within the county. The EOZ is not an answer. The EOZ is outdated, and it was written for win. Or you Commissioners say that the EOZ has everything we need is not true. It doesn't address the solar issue at all. There may be two paragraphs in there, and that's it. And they are vague. Vague is not what we need in ordinances. They need to be clear and concise so there's no gray area for any assumption by either the county or a solar company. These need to be updated along with the comprehensive plan before any other solar projects can be permitted in the county. Everything needs to be put on hold. Fail you to do that is going to allow solar development in our county and destroy the beauty of the county, the people's property, their enjoyment of their lives, and the entire future of our county. It's going to be a legacy that everybody will remember that you three Commissioners allowed to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Okay. Back in the room. Is there anybody who'd like to provide public comment? All right. Back online. Ms. Arnold.
Hi. Last week, I think Greg Wagner asked Commissioner Soder if his motive for not running was because he was going to work for the Planning Department. And of course, the answer was no, which I'm sure is correct. But there are rumors flying around that Commissioner Soder is going to be working as the long-range planner for the Planning Department. And so I'd just like to ask that question directly. Are there any plans in place for you to move into the Planning Department as a long-range planner?
No.
You have any idea where those rumors have come from?
Pat, do you have further comment?
Not really. I mean, I guess at the end of this time, when you guys are responding, somebody might update us on the situation with the Planning Department's search for the long-range planner. But no, no, no further comment.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Okay. Is there any further comment online or in public? Unmute yourself. Raise your hand. Star six. Not seeing anyone. Okay. This is your last chance for public comment. Going once. Going twice. And sold. Would either of my seatmates like to respond to any public comments?
I would prefer to go last, sir.
Oh. I don't really have much to say. It's, anything I say gets weaponized, so unfortunately. So no. As to myself personally, as far as the long-range planning position in, in the Planning Department, the Planning Director was in during her budget and is suggesting a change in her org chart to add a project coordinator that would, would be there to start, I guess, work on the comp plan update. That's something the board hasn't had any discussion on as far as whether we're going to allow that. And that, again, would be, but as to the rumors that I was going to be a long-range planner in the Planning Department, that is patently false. That is no. As to where the rumors come from, where do any rumors, where do rumors come from on, on any of it? So I don't have, yeah. I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay. I guess I'll start with, Mr. Barta, thank you for your public comment. Thank you for always coming and being respectful and for trying to provide options that the county commissioners can concur and think about. You have no idea how much I respect how you always present yourself, as well as when you usually send me emails or give me ideas or rabbit holes to chase. I usually start chasing them, and it means a lot to me when somebody comes forward with not just reasons to be upset, but also reasons to find the answer. That goes a long ways. And I have not had recent conversations with my Yakima seatmates, but I intend to do so. So thank you. With Ms. Gilbert, I agree with nearly everything you say, that childcare is important, that childcare is one of those deserts that we have when it comes to childcare through state-sanctioned childcare. People find childcare and have been in this county for decades, centuries. They were just not in state-sanctioned childcare facilities that are run by either a company or a county or some other facility. Ms. Lowell, which we brought on, which our first task that we all had for her was find a way that we can make childcare and make it work. And she has turned over every rock and brought us multiple different iterations of a business plan in order to make childcare work, and none of them pencil. None of them have come close to penciling, from what I have seen. And that's if we're providing the facilities ourselves. How anybody else does it outside of that, unless you truly have, like in economies of scope and scale at a large, like you'd see maybe in West Seattle or something, I don't know how you do it. But I don't know anybody who starts a business knowing that there's no way they can make money doing it. And so, yes, there's childcare committees. I talk with, as you said, Mayor Marla on a weekly basis. You know, we're trying, we talk about many different projects, and whether it's childcare or affordable housing or housing for our seniors, all of these things. The problem is, is that there's only so much butter in a budget, and we can only spread it so far. And we're already looking at a budget that is not in a good financial position. And so if you would like me to subsidize childcare for one person, that's one county employee who won't have a job potentially. And that's as honest as it is out there when it comes to, when you're looking at budgets, and you actually have to look at the hard financials. With Mr. Eldred. Yeah, I've never thought about the impact that solar will have on the county. I don't hear about it on a weekly basis. I don't care about the future of my county. I don't care. I don't care. Wow. That's, that's, that's quite a lot to say to people who've, you know, spent their entire lives volunteering in this county and giving back to this county. I, as I understand it, the only way you would think I care is if I do exactly as you want. Because we are working. When you say we're some of the top paid officials by the hour, if you think that I come in on a Tuesday and I leave on a Tuesday, and that's the only thing that any of us do for the week, I'm sorry, you're welcome to come job shadow me for a week and, and hope you can stay up late. That isn't the fact. And you want to know where rumors come from? Rumors come from statements like that. So when you, when people ask about, I'm hearing these rumors. And to move on to Ms. Irving, I have never said anything in public or in private. In fact, I have never even responded to your text messages because of that very same reason. I don't spread rumors. I don't spread facts, and I don't talk about personnel matters in the public. That's not how we do things here, and I'm sorry that rumors are being spread about you. We know probably as well as anybody how much rumors can hurt your image and your reputation and your potential for future jobs, and I'm sorry that that's happened to you. Mr. Wagner. I don't think that solar panels are toxic because people all around this county have solar panels on top of their houses. I don't think that using inherently inflammable terms like saying that everything is toxic and dangerous is going to be the way that. and dangerous is going to be the way that you succeed in not having solar panels next to your house. When you talk about lithium-ion batteries, I'm sitting here next to a lithium-ion battery. Actually, I'm sitting next to two of them, three of them, shoot, never mind, a whole bunch of them. And these are the risks that we take in life. Everything comes down to risks. Do I ever want my phone to get too hot? No, that's why it shuts down when it gets too hot, probably so that it doesn't start a fire. But again, that inflammatory language isn't going to be what helps you be successful in your endeavor. If you took more of a path, more like Mr. Barta, and come forward with ideas and solutions in a logical, rational manner, you might get a lot further. But calling people names, the emails that you send, would you rather me spend time working on all the projects that I have to work on, including solar? Or would you rather me spend time responding to emails where you say I mispronounced a word or a letter or a date? And again, I don't have all week to prepare my statements to respond to public comments because we have to do this off the cuff. So, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna misstate every once in a while because we're not perfect. At least my mind isn't. Maybe Commissioner Christopher's is. And Ms. Arnold, to the rumor or the statement, we have had the senior planner position advertised for a year now, actually, over a year. We have had applicants, very few, and we thought we had a person at one point, and they decided not to take the job. You're well aware that the senior planner was something that I brought forward, that I thought was something that is, we have to have in order to move planning forward with the comprehensive plan and the other plans, knowing that it was going, the money was going to have to come from somewhere else. The Planning Department takes a lot of county dollars, and it doesn't bring a lot back. We are increasing the fees on planning. Hopefully, that'll put a dent in some of that, but it's still not going to come close to paying for itself. With regards to Commissioner Soder, if I could do anything to get Commissioner Soder to stay around, I would definitely do it because there's, he's probably forgot more about planning in Click Attack County. He was here when planning was successful in Click Attack County, I think. Sadly.
Me and Lewis and Clark.
You're lucky, it's, county wasn't named after you, they're dinosaurs. I wish that he could stay, and I wish that, I hope that at one point, we can use all that knowledge and information that he has. He is one commissioner and one person that I've always admired.
So, this Commissioner Christopher, on Dave Barta, I would echo my seatmate's statement that I appreciate and I applaud him being able to articulate what he is trying to get through in a clear, concise, non-name-calling fashion. That shows poise and character to me. And whether I agree with him or disagree with him, I appreciate it, and it, and it's a lot easier to listen when you're not being name-called. To your statement, Mr. Barta, I agree with you on your statement. And on January 1st, there may or may not be a change in the two-to-one vote we currently have on the issue. Until then, we have a two-to-one vote on the issue. I think the rest of them were pretty well colored, covered. Dell asked, do you ever think about the negative impacts every day, sir? To Mr. Wagner, I can't answer any of your questions because your questions are fundamentally inaccurate. To Ms. Pat, I agree with you on the, the long-range planner. It was my push to hire a consultant to get the, the job working, but the board has chosen to continue to look for the long-range planner, so that is where we are currently, and I hope we get an applicant tomorrow that is qualified. That's all I have.
Okay. Last chance. Okay. All right. With that, we are going to close public comment, and I would say thank you to all the citizens who commented today. As always, we respect all of your comments, and when you ask questions that we need to go search for, that's what we try to do. Okay, moving on, we have a public meeting to consider the boundary, consider approval of boundary line adjustment, BLA 2022-09.
Boundary line adjustment, BLA 2022-09 is a proposal to adjust the common boundary line between parcel 04113120130100 and 04113108010200 off of Arrow Lane. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within the portion of Section 31, Township 4 North, Range 11 East, Willamette, Meridian, Click Attack County, Washington, in the Houston vicinity. The administrative review of this boundary line adjustment has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from Road Health, the Treasurers, and Planning Departments. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds it in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will need to be granted for final approval of BLA 2022-09.
My seatmates had a chance to review it?
Yeah. I don't have any issues with it.
I'm assuming the primary purpose was that it was maybe close to encroachment?
It was to fix the encroachment.
What it looks like.
Pretty much right on the line.
Yeah. I don't want to say encroachment, if, I don't know, but.
Yes, you're correct.
Close. No, I'm, I'm good if you're ready, ready for a motion.
It always kind of amazed me why, you know, people would, I mean, I have two 20-acre parcels, I would never think of building.
Right on the line.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's enough room there, just move it around a little bit.
You have to understand, this whole area, those boundary lines where the old markers were and everything have been moved because of the section lines having to get split. And so they've moved quite a bit through that whole area.
I figured it was, it was, they couldn't find the stake. I like the house here, it's got the best view of the mountain. And then they found the stake a year later and went, whoops. It'd be also. It's an easy adjustment, I'm fine with it.
I'd entertain a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve boundary line adjustment, BLA 2022-09. This between the applicant, Edward Tyson Cross, Jamie Polito, and Christine Douglas. My motion is to approve the boundary line adjustment.
I would second that motion.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the boundary line adjustment, BLA 2022-09. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, this is, I just have to, I have so many. Something, because there's only two I use, this one and this, those others.
All right. All right. Shall we move on? Consent agenda?
Good? Everybody's good?
Yeah, I'm good. Mr. Chairman, I'm with you, we approve the consent agenda with five items.
You got it. Yeah, I got it now. I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Estimate. Mr. Chairman, a motion that we approve, pay estimate number four to James Dean Construction Incorporated in the amount of $574,764.48 for the county road project CRP 342 and CRP 353.
Second the motion. There's been a motion in a second to pay, pay estimate number four to James Dean Construction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And to answer your question, now it's 151 over 98.
Oh. Yeah. What was my earlier prediction today? The worst part, one and 130. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to pay, pay estimate number 27 to Kirby Nagelhout Construction Company, amount of $57,608.47, which excludes retainage in the amount of $2,880.42, and includes sales tax in the amount of $4,320.64. Yes, folks should be checking all that math, treasures here, for a total payment amount of $59,048.68. This is for the county services building project contract number C03120. My motion is to approve.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion in a second to pay, pay estimate number 27 to Kirby Nagelhout Construction Company. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then finally, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of $794,885.18, and payroll benefit warrants in the amount of $1,055,376.9 for the date ending August 29th, 2022.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion in a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, next up, we have the new business, the Rural Arterial Program Grant Applications, Final Prospectus for replacement of the Shran's Road Bridge and the Sunnyside Road Resurfacing Project. I think we heard from Public Works this morning. Do you gentlemen have any issues with it?
I do not.
No.
I hope we can get at least one of the projects.
So you need a motion on the record as far as authorizing the chair's signature?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, yeah, there's the rural final prospectus. I don't think it would hurt any.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to authorize chair's signature on the Rural RAP program, the Rural Arterial Program Grant Application Final Prospectus. This is for the replacement of the Shran's Road Bridge and for the Sunnyside Road Resurfacing Project.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion in a second to approve signature for the Rural Arterial Program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Let's move on to our treasurer, so he can get out of here on the update on the Finance
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. So, we had the Finance Committee last Friday, and during the Finance Committee, we had a discussion on several things. I'll go through a list of them. The first was, we talked about the local excise tax dollars that were categorized from the first three months of the year for Fund 135 that need to be transferred. The amount that we determined the amount to, or the amount that we are planning on transferring is $774,336.45. That's larger than normal because of the excise tax from the SDS transaction that happened in the previous year. The other piece to remember about that is that excise taxes are calculated on the date of the deed. So like, there was a lot of excise taxes still going to 135 in April because the deeds were dated for March, so that's how they calculate. So there are some fees that will, or some charges that will continue, and we maybe need to set up a discussion of how it's, looked like it was like 60 bucks for May and June. So that's a conversation that we need to kind of figure out, and I'll work that out with Jen as to how the best way is to handle that. But the majority of those are going to get transferred, and we plan to do the journal entry in, in August. We discussed code compliance benefits. It was brought up, I think Brenda brought it up, about the, where the benefits for the code compliance officer went. We had another discussion about it. Basically, the discussion was to leave it right where it is, which is in the Building Admin Subdepartment, and Brenda was going to follow up with the Building Department We discussed, oh, this e-signature, the Auditor's Office has continued to have short staff, so that will get kicked another month, so we'll talk about that in September. We had a discussion, like a budget recap, I guess you would say, we just talked about the budget workshops that began the Thursday before we met. And one of the things that was discussed, which I do have an answer, so everybody, we can make sure that we are all, went back and looked, yes, I did overstate my debt budget by $535,000, so there is a positive.
Good job.
I'm sorry.
I've never been happier.
I know. I calculated, you have to.
I want to remind everybody, who saw that?
I, I, you have to separate out interest and principal. And so when I calculated that out, I didn't, I picked up the principal twice. So the debt payment for 2023 is 1.1 million 270,625.
So is that our last payment now?
That's for the new building.
So that's the new.
So the old, the old building, we had, no, we had intended to pay that off, that last year, we budgeted additional dollars to pay that off. We were going to pay that off in June, that was what we had anticipated, because that's the first bond payment. With the staffing in the Treasurer's Office and having the state audit go longer, we're going to do that in the October payment. So you can't, you can't just pay, you don't just take and pay them extra, there's a physical manager and everything, we have to get it a, a number and everything.
Right, but we should not see that in our budget going.
That was our, yes, that's what I budgeted, and I think that we were all in agreement when we did that, that we were going to have, that was the piece.
22, it's in this budget here.
Yes, yes, so, but that was, we had some people leave around May and into June, and so that, that, that got missed, well, it didn't get missed, it just, we just didn't have the bodies and to do, though we did not, so we will, we will work on that. We've already kind of started some of the process to get that happening for the, it's November, but if, if there's a possibility to do it earlier, we will. But we can't just send them money and with the way it works, we have to go through the fiscal agent and request it and so on and so forth, so we will work on that. But that's the new building, the 1.2. And then we had a discussion about Dowsport Water. Jake kind of gave us some overview of kind of some of the capital projects that were out there and some of the things and where the system was at and kind of trying to raise the rates, and just kind of updated us on some of the questions that we've talked about. So, so that was another kind of budget discussion that we had kind of covered, just to kind of get our mindset back on there, because I know we talked about it probably two or three months ago, and so we kind of went back through that. And then there were no staff reports, and the next meeting will be on 9/9 at 9:00 a.m.
9/9.
9/9, 9/9er.
9:09 in the morning?
Yeah, well, 9:00. So that's all I have. Is there any additions or if anybody is in the room that has other questions?
That's good news on the.
Yes, yes, I, yes.
With how much more money we just.
I, I know, I know, but you know, you deal with the thing that's in front of you at the moment. Take the wins when you get them.
Yep.
Right? I would agree with that.
585.
535.
$535,000 gain is a good thing.
Yes.
But I would have liked the insurance thing to be spread out over two years, but I get to be happy about it next year.
So, thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you, Craig. Okay, next up, unfinished business and board pending. I will let you all know, had the meeting with the PUD for dollars, and we went for two hours, and the last one that we were almost to agreement on before I had to run to my next meeting was, they would. was, they would like all their projects fully funded, and then they'd be willing to put two hundred and fifty thousand towards Dallasport, and nothing for Golden Dale.
That's a very generous offer.
Yeah, how nice of them.
So we didn't, we didn't make the agreement. I wanted it, and then I had to get to my next meeting, but then I figured, well, I'll just talk to you guys today about it and see what your feelings are.
So what's the, remind me, what, what's the sum total of fully fund their projects? What's, what's that number?
Oh, I can go grab it real quick.
Say, I thought it was.
I want, I want to say from memory, it's like one point two.
That's what I thought, one point two.
Which is close enough, I mean, I guess for the.
And they were, they were pretty serious that they didn't want to see any projects coming from municipalities, because they have more people and more ability to come up with dollars.
Oh, you mean they can fund their own project?
That's, that was kind of the.
Going forward, anyway.
Okay, the whole thing together. Ending fund cash balance will be one point four-two. If everything was done, it was one five eight zero minus two hundred and fifty.
About one-two. And can you, just for the record, what's, what is the things on their project list?
So there was the Glenwood Water System Corrosion Control Installation and Leak Detection for a hundred and forty thousand, and that was, they were required to put in some corrosion control program by, by Department of Ecology required it. They said, well, how can ecology require anything if it's on the reservation now? And they said, well, they apparently, ecology is still doing things up in Glenwood. I didn't think they were. The wastewater treatment plant lift station rebuild is kind of the same situation that we have in Dallasport, that.
Which community?
That's Glenwood.
Also Glenwood?
Yeah, also Glenwood, but it's just on the sewer side.
Okay.
And this is one of two lift stations that they have, and that, that, that's lift station rebuild is part of the first section of like three and a half million dollars in upgrades that need to happen there, kind of like the exact same thing we have in Dallasport. Rimrock Water System Wellhouse.
They're asking for five hundred thousand.
Yep. The Rimrock Water System Wellhouse Electrical System and Pump replacement, they've been having a lot of issues with that pump, and they want to bring in three-phase and replace that pump that's in there with the three-phase variable VFD versus the single-phase that they've been having. The Ponderosa Water System Red Cedar Area.
How much was that, I'm sorry?
Hundred and forty, sorry. Ponderosa Water System Red Cedar Area Water Pipe Replacement. I think Ponderosa Park took on another little water system, and so this pipe is pretty long and three hundred thousand to replace that. But that's a nine hundred thousand dollar project.
Their total ask is one million and eighty thousand.
Yes. Golden Dale Wastewater Treatment Plant is ours, and Dallasport is ours, both of those for two fifty. And so the Glenwood plant, out of that five hundred, it's really a million dollar project, so it's fifty percent. The Glenwood Water System Corrosion Control was a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. The work has already taken place, but what they've done is, is they've took, taken all the money out of that entire program. And then the Rimrock Wellhouse. I think that's the total cost. And so I went in with the statement, what sounds fair is, is everybody should bring a fifty percent match. And so that would take the water control lifts thing down to ninety thousand was my plan. Glenwood at five hundred, Rimrock at seventy. And then ours at three hundred, because we have on, which is another weird thing, you know, this five hundred and ninety thousand dollar project that we have for Dallasport on, in our budget, the PUD had that project happening out in two thousand and twenty-four. I said, well, that doesn't make any sense that our, you know, our big sheets that we, we took down to Dallasport were different. And I don't know if he had a, just an older version or something.
Well, it's a good thing it wasn't twenty-three, or there wouldn't be any money left in twenty-five. It's still my opinion that the fund is designed to be shared. I think if they don't, if they have a problem with Golden Dale, that's fine, and I can fully understand their argument of it's a municipality, they can come up with their own funds or raise their own taxes. So I would agree, and I would say that we need to ask for the Dallasport project to be fully funded.
Fully funded. Five hundred and eighty. Five hundred and eighty thousand.
And they can pick and choose what they want for their half.
So I'm, I'm curious, because I, I assume we all got the same from Jen. This is the distressed sales tax.
Oh, yeah, somebody does.
And it's, you know, current, current fund balance is two point eight million in that.
Point oh-nine dollars.
These are. These are oh, no, oh, okay, never mind.
We're talking about.
I always had this all worked out, like, doing all my calculations. Yeah, I did, sorry, never mind. Yes.
Landfill gas is what we're talking about.
Yes, we're talking about landfill.
We have one point three-five-nine.
Like, what's the problem? We're, we're good, we're gold, these are all good projects.
And the other budget.
Yes, the money's at the wrong fund, so.
We'll have one point four-two-one by the end of the year.
Are they planning on completing these projects this year, or will they be getting the approval for these projects this year and be actually working on them next year?
I don't know if anybody's going to complete any projects between now and the end of the year.
So they're mainly, this is for next year. I'm just curious if they're gonna, if they're getting approval for four projects, are they going to do them all at one time? Are they going to drag that out over four years, so that they don't have to come back and ask again next year for something else? Why are they asking for so many all at one time? Because if you look at the sheet of asks, there's never been so many asks in one year. Granted, there was a couple of years of COVID where nobody had an ask, so maybe that's what backed them up.
And, you know, I asked the question, I said, well, we have two wastewater treatment plant projects that are about the same, you know, why, why would we? Because they didn't want to fund Dallasport to begin with.
Of course they don't, because they're used to getting it all.
Why would we? And then I said, you know, what's, what's the difference? Both of them have three million dollars of, of work to do, why wouldn't we fund them both? And he, and he had a good, a good statement, and that was that Glenwood built their wastewater treatment plant themselves, the county didn't spend twenty million building it for them. And so the people at Dallasport have already gotten a hefty subsidy when it comes to that, where how could we ask the people of Glenwood to spend three and a half million dollars of their own money on top of everything they've done?
I, I get that argument, and I understand that argument, but at this point, knowing the repairs that need to be made, I can't go to Dallasport and tell them, I need to raise your sewer rates to two hundred and twenty-five dollars a month to pay for all these projects. That should have been done long ago, it isn't, so we have to, we're going to have to eat it, or just not do it. I don't know that we can go to them now, and we should go to them now with a rate that is realistic, and I don't care if that rate's sixty-five, seventy-five.
Eighty-five.
Whatever it takes to be.
Dan Christopher at Placodat County dot org.
Whatever it is to be self-sufficient and off the subsidy. But even at that rate, you're not going to get these million dollar projects done any time in the future, so. They're going to need to be done by rate, by fund balance, and by landfill fund, yeah.
Well, so the PUD, they, they have a different way of doing things. Their mentality is, is you take out a loan, and then you pay back the loan, so that the people that are getting the benefit of the investment do that. And so we, we talked a little bit about that. So their idea would be is, you, you do these large projects that we're required, that will likely be required to do in order to, to redo it, but we do that by going out and getting a loan on, to do all of this, and then that's paid back over twenty years.
Over time with the rates.
But we hold the real loan for twenty years. No way to divest of the project if we're holding a loan on it.
Unless somebody's willing to take it with the said loan and.
I don't know that the loan would let you sell it.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point.
So not that I'm opposed to the idea, if the fact is you're keeping the, the thing for that long, and again, I would argue if you're taking out the loan over twenty years to pay for these projects, are you just paying for the near-term projects, or the ones that are going to be needed in five years? What if there's development in ten years? You're going to take another loan out to pay for that scenario? And, and in the end, because of the, the low rates they've been paying, what would their rates have to currently be to pay for all those projects? Again, I would say that the landfill gas fund is, my understanding of it, and I haven't lived here five generations, is that it's used to benefit the citizens, and I'm not saying the PUD projects don't benefit the citizens, but I would argue that whether you're doing a sewer project, storm or wastewater project in Ponderosa Park, or whether you're doing it in Dallasport, it's still a benefit of the citizens, it's just a matter of who owns the project. And I don't know that they want to fund our project, because they want us to use our funds on our project and give them all the landfill gas funds, which is what's historically happened.
You have to understand that all these projects, all these systems that they've taken over, aren't the PUDs, the P, they're enterprise funds in essence. Now, the PUD can't shift money into them, they have to be self-sustaining.
Just like the PUD doesn't want to do the cities or whatnot, because they're, have their own way of generating revenue, the PUD also has its own rate of generating revenue for these, revenue for these projects, if they wanted to raise the rates on those rate payers to pay for their projects and not be subsidized. They don't want us to be subsidized, but they continue to want to be subsidized, and I kind of find that a dull standard.
And the other good point that they made on Dallasport is, is that we could, they, they think that we could do the Dallasport projects and raise the rates there, and then they would be more in line with the rates that everybody else pays currently. Because if you ask Glenwood to pay the three and a half million, they already have a high sewer rate already, and so they're going to, their rates are going to go up even more. And so that's their rationale, is, is the goal is to try to keep rates as close as you can to equal amongst all the different systems.
I'm not arguing against that, if possible, yes. But I would say that we might be able to adjust the rates in Dallasport and put funds away and come up with future revenues to pay off future upgrades down there, but the ones that are needed in the next couple of years are not going to be funded out of rate, rate increases. You're just not going to get the money in time to pay for those projects, so.
Unless you take out loans.
It comes down to loans that, that you're either going to charge their rates even more to pay back their own loans, or you're going to be using funding like the landfill gas fund, which is what I would think it was created for. The county, I don't know this, I'm, I'm speculating, that the county maybe hasn't asked for use of it before, because they've had funds. So let's go ahead and let PUD use them and help keep rates low, and, and that's fine, I, I totally get that. But this is a new era. This is a new, the county doesn't have funds. This is a, if I got to come up with three hundred thousand dollars to help fund that, now I got to start looking at where am I cutting three hundred thousand from last year's budget, even at status quo. That's three hundred thousand that wasn't accounted for last year. So now I've got to look at positions or people, or something of that nature, or vehicles or something, to come up with a three hundred thousand half of Dallasport. And.
More like three hundred and thirty thousand.
I, I don't get it. I, I. I would, if, if that was their ultimate final straw, I would say, all right, well, come back to us next year, and we'll have the same talk. I mean, it's a negotiation.
I tried to get it bumped up to three hundred. I said, look, we'll walk away from the Golden Dale one, but I think that, you know, it should at least be fifty percent, so it'd be two hundred and ninety thousand. And he said, nope, I'm not going any higher than what's in your application.
I won't sign off on anything less than half.
I guess first off, these, every one of these projects that they're proposing are good projects that are, they are appropriate uses of the dollars. It's just a question of what's the, how do we equitably, there's, there's never enough resources for the need. That's, that's the bottom line, and they're. So what, what is a reasonable? And I'm, I am not stuck on a fifty-fifty, because I, again, I think there's no there and us, it's all us, it's all the same people, it's the same folks, it's, it's project-based as far as if, do they have merit or not. I do think the, I think Dallasport should get its, a share, it should be in the running, it also is a worthy project, that it's you know, that I have not, I'm not stuck on the fifty percent.
Well, and I, I guess I would say that I would like to see fifty percent, but if it's a move towards fifty percent in future years, that, that's fine with me, too. I, I don't like using all of the fund balance, which is kind of what it seems like they're doing this year with their request.
So the current fund, again, tell me again, since I had worked all of my stuff on the wrong fund.
So by the end of this year.
Getting senile into this year.
By the end of this year, the fund balance will be one point four-two-one-five-sixty.
And they're requesting one point oh, one point.
One oh-eight oh.
One oh-eight, and we were requesting.
Five hundred.
Five hundred. And they've agreed, they could support the two fifty ask for.
Two fifty ask plus all theirs in full.
And all theirs at full. Which is one point three-three. That's one four-two, and there's, there is, two hundred and fifty thousand flows into the fund every year. I think Commissioner Christopher does raise an issue about the, I'm curious about what's the timing issue, too, as far as, like, everybody, I understand why they want the dollars obligated, but it's, it's unlocked, they're not going to be able to spend this.
Right, if they're not doing the project next year, why can't they come back and ask the next year when there's additional five hundred thousand in there? Or are they just trying to get all their projects done now, so they won't have to renegotiate next year? The other thing I would ask.
And maybe they're not, maybe they are going to do, maybe they plan on doing everything.
It's just that, boy, that's a lot of projects in one year. The other question I would have.
They contract out, I assume all.
When they got five hundred thousand dollars from this fund to pay to the, for the FERC application for pump storage, when they sold that project off, did they reimburse this fund, the five hundred thousand dollars this fund gave it for the FERC license? Or did they put that into their own profits? So with that.
Did they sell it?
Well, first off, I have no knowledge that they sold their application and they were at any kind of reimbursement at all. I don't know.
That's the way I understood it.
Well, we also, we also hear all kinds of information out there that, I don't know. Anybody heard anything? I'd be curious, no, no.
You know, bad.
I mean, it's.
Not worth investing in either, I'm just saying, there's. Not worth investing in either. I'm just saying there's, um.
More rumors. You're making them right now, so it's.
Good thing, whatever said in the back of the room.
Yeah, it is actually up there, so.
I may not be able to hear it, but the computer can. I can read it.
I couldn't hear the audience at all when I was on the Zoom.
Well, you, all you have to do is read it.
Oh, well, that's right, I didn't have my teleprompter on.
So it was pretty much, give us everything we want and we'll agree to the one Dallasport project. And when I said fifty percent, I meant like fifty percent of each project.
Right.
A fifty percent match on the projects.
Right.
I guess my, my new argument would be give us the Dallasport project fully funded and you can have the rest of the fund balance. May not pay for every project you have. You might have to push one of those smaller projects to next year. Uh, and then get the funding next year for it. But I do not want to try to come up with three hundred thousand dollars out of county budget to help fund the Dallasport project.
Well, do you want to try to come up with the whole thing? Cause that's what's currently in the budget.
Hasn't been voted yes on yet.
No, for next year's budget.
For twenty twenty-three.
This is next year's budget. Yeah, it's five, Dallasport wastewater is five hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight. I mean, we did just save five hundred thousand on the landfill request.
Wow. We didn't save it.
From the budget, it was presented.
Yes, as presented, it's true.
You can also go back through the, the landfill gas fund for the last ten years and say how much of it's been appropriated to one side, to how much has been to the other side.
I know, but I don't like it's the one side. It's not, there is no sides, at least in one.
That's my point, though, is, is.
It's all the same people.
We should get to use it once in a while. If it wasn't meant to be used in a way that both sides get to use it, why would there be a commissioner representative and why wouldn't it be the PUD lot, landfill gas fund, that they manage and oversee and direct towards the projects they want? That's the way it's been for ten years. They direct it to where they want. But I don't believe that's the way they set it up, or they wouldn't have put us in on it.
I think there, there are examples. There was the, the two hundred thousand that was directed towards the, uh, the Dalles, uh, water system to leverage those grant funds for hooking up the.
The city, the well.
It didn't get spent, but we still allocated it. It just, it's just sitting in the fund still. Okay, but it was allocated, so there are examples.
There, there's one for the county or the airport down there, which was the payment to the PUD for putting the infrastructure in down there. But that's the only one the county has actually used. On that entire sheet.
But again, we also don't own these systems. We don't own these water systems. Why would, what would we be asking for? We have, we have full control over the point oh nine dollars.
Well, we could have been asking for any improvements to Dallasport for the last ten years, and we haven't.
Dallasport didn't need improved back then.
We couldn't use it to make the bond payments.
Maybe.
Hmm, I don't think so.
I don't think you'd get it through the PUD.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think you're gonna get it through the PUD. I think the auditors would have some issues, but.
I mean, this is not a situation where playing hardball and saying, you're gonna fund mine or I'm not funding any of yours. The, the people lose in situations like this. I don't think that's, that's a logical step we wanna go.
Yes, and to a, an earlier commenter, earlier, you do have to look at sometimes what's, what's the, yeah, cause ultimately the, the folks in Glenwood and Rimrock and Ponerosa and Dallasport are the ones that are gonna pay the price if we can't come to some.
See, well, that's, that's where I disagree because I would take one of their four projects, which I can't, I mean, maybe, maybe. I can't for the life of me think that all four projects are gonna fail this year if they don't get upgraded. They might be able to go one more year.
Yeah.
And if that's the case, do three of them, give us Dallasport, come back and ask for the other one the next year. We say yes to the other one the next year. That's my argument. I'm not saying that the Dallasport people are better than the Ponerosa part people or Glenwood people, and not that they're all deserve to be treated equally. That, that is my argument. One of them's being left out right now, and I think they should be included.
No, they're not, not saying that they're, I mean, their proposal, I mean, at this point, their proposal is everybody gets everything, except Goldendale, we pay for it out of oh nine, which we've already authorized and allocated.
Right, but if their argument is they only want to pay fifty percent of the Dallasport expenses.
Yeah, they only want to pay the two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty, not even fifty percent.
Right, so forty percent, then why are we not only paying forty percent of theirs? That's my fair and equitable argument.
So the other thing that they said is, is, you know, these are the projects that they picked that they felt had the highest need for the users of where they're at. They said there's lots of other projects.
Right, there's always.
There's lots and lots of other projects, but these are the ones that are at the very top of the highest need. If Glenwood Water System doesn't get their cash, they are potentially twenty thousand dollars in the hole for having cash available balance at the end of the year. They just won't have the money. I mean, I got in pretty deep. I went, you know, that Rimrock project, they just took, um, three-phase power up there. And I'm like, well, if it's been running on single phase, why do you need three-phase? If it's less than a ten horsepower motor, just put single phase in there so you don't have to run three-phase power and spend forty thousand dollars running the three-phase power from the end of the road in there to where the pump is. Do it in a single-phase variable frequency drive and it'll save you a bunch of money. But. I don't know. How would you like me to get back to? And I guess the other question is, um, are we going to put five hundred and ninety-three, six hundred minus two fifty, plus ten? You know, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars into Dallasport to do this first project this year? Are we gonna find the dollars in the landfill request or are we gonna push it off for a year?
If you push it off for a year, you gotta find five hundred and ninety, because they're gonna use up the rest of the fund balance by next year.
No, because once it's allocated, if it takes you two years to do it, it takes you two years.
Two years to do it.
But it's still allocated to it.
Yeah.
I think this is, while both parties have projects and they have well more, if we're ever gonna get anything, this is the time to get it. If we went to them next year and they don't have a project and we have a Dallasport, the answer's gonna be no, by presumption, because there's no reason to negotiate. Yeah, I. No, we are not gonna find the remaining balance to, unless you wanna lace people up.
Then aren't we ahead to take the two fifty and get it allocated, and at least we have that? Cause if we don't, then it's not like the project's gonna not have to get done. It's gonna have to get funded at some point. And so.
Well, that's because I guess.
If we say no, we're not, we're not gonna play ball, and so nobody gets funding for anything. The money will still be there and we'll see you next year, or two years from now, or whenever it is. Meanwhile,
that's.
Stuff just gets more expensive.
Right, you're just assuming that they're not going to negotiate, that they're not going to say, okay.
This isn't a poker game. This is infrastructure for our people. I don't care if it's, the PUD gets won over on us. Who gives a shit? I don't. Yeah, it's daves at clickattackcounty.org. And you know who I'm talking to. It is. These are, there's nothing wrong with these projects. They're good projects.
Not saying there is.
There isn't anything, I think, I think there is a difference between Dallasport and these other systems. These are standalone systems. They are not, um, and they are, they're enterprise funds, and they have the same restrictions on their ability to raise their rates to finance these improvements. They're gonna have to come to this fund. I'm not saying we shouldn't come to the fund. We are. It's like, but I think we can, I think we can share, meaning I would rather we were somewhere around the fifty percent as far as of the project. Our project's five ninety-three. They're offering two fifty. I think there, maybe that's the thing I would be okay. Go back and say, we're, you know, we're almost there, but I think we gotta get, you know, our thing is five ninety-three and we want half of it is what we think is a fair, so whatever that is. You know, two, two eighty, two eighty-five, and, you know, we're good. There is, there's enough funding. It depletes the fund down, but it's also by the end of next year, there's another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the fund.
Here's a question. I would be willing, if they give us the two fifty, whatever, two eighty.
Whatever it is.
That half, or whatever you're talking about. Then we'll fund their projects with a gentleman's agreement that what goes into the fund balance next year also goes to the Dallasport project to make the Dallasport project whole next year. And then we'll do the project in twenty twenty-four.
But see, that, that's where I have a problem. I don't think that you should be paying for these. I think you have to have skin in the game, no matter what. Okay, I think everything that we do, that we try to do in this county is to bring in as much federal and state dollars as we can, and we provide the match.
I would argue you have ten thousand, or ten million dollars of the skin in that game. Taxpayers already have ten million in skin in that game. I don't know. That's where I'm at. Those are my two choices.
So my thought was, we've got fund balance in the Dallasport wastewater fund. If we can do a half of it with, um, or almost half, the two fifty, two eighty.
Whatever.
Whatever it is. I mean, we're fighting over thirty thousand bucks. We just spent that probably sitting here. We use a quarter of the actual fund balance and then we use a quarter of landfill. And then that gets us where we need to be to do that project. We can go back to the Dallasport community. We can say, we went and we found grant dollars to come up with half of this project. And this is, this is the direction you, and you guys are gonna have to come up with a portion of this too. You know, your rates have to go up, uh, in order to pay for the necessary improvements. You don't like the, the improvements, well, go talk to the Department of Ecology, who's requiring it, Department of Health. But pretty soon Dallasport's gonna need lift station repairs and everything that they're doing. And you look at these prices and they're astronomical.
Right.
You know, we also have this Dallasport, you know, watered project that we allocated dollars for that never got done, that now they wanna go back and finally do, to hook that well up and then hook up those, you know, we know that's coming. And how high of a priority is that to allow growth in Dallasport? But, I mean, is that something you guys can get behind if we use, you know, a quarter of it for landfill dollars? And they, the, the fund itself has to come up with the money, some money? Cause I can't remember, I thought there was three hundred thousand or something.
Yeah, I think there's some, there is some fund balance in there that is available, if I'm remembering correctly.
There are no landfills.
What's that?
There are no landfills.
Comes out of the landfill request.
Well, I get it. At ten point five million, that's impossible, so.
It's not ten five, it's ten now, cause ten five included that. So now it's at ten, which is still not a great number. It's not a doable number. But it's also five ninety-three is in that, so it's really nine five.
True, it's really coming out of reserves.
No, 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 I worked, I worked out some numbers.
I, no, I can't, sorry.
Cause we just got the three fifty-eight from Public Health is out, so now we're down from ten.
Uh, how was the three fifty-eight from Public Health out?
So Public Health and the first, there, it was three fifty-eight was the original ask last year.
Right.
We cut it in half. And then this year, they got a whole bunch of foundational public health dollars, an extra million. And so that's gonna get Xed out.
So they're not asking for more landfill funds this year after all, is what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what I said. That's, that's.
I haven't heard that from them, so this is new to me. So it's back down to one forty-seven, which is where it was last year. Remember, you searched correct?
No, it's, it's zeroed. Not one forty-seven, it's zeroed this year.
So we're not putting any county dollars into the operation of the health department at all?
That's the law. No, not.
No, no, I mean.
No.
Landfill.
Landfill dollars. They're the, they're the best-funded department that the county has.
For the next couple of years.
For the next two years, then it gets really ugly.
Till the next biennium.
Okay, minus. So we were, we were down to nine, six, four, nine. And so if you take the wastewater treatment plant, five nine.
Was another five ninety-three.
Five nine three, but subtract out two hundred and fifty.
Right.
Uh, minus. Oh, I just got a minus two hundred and fifty. That takes us to nine, three, nine, nine.
Fund balance in Dallasport wastewater was what, three something?
Uh, something, not sure.
I guess the question would be, is there.
No, no, I did that wrong. My bad.
There, is there, so if we split those, be, is there, is there a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of available fund balance beyond cash flow and, cause the fund has accumulated some, like it is, it's, it's not turning a profit. It's because we've been paying the capital. So it's like, oh, yeah, I'm, my savings are going up, but mom and dad are making house payments. Which sometimes mom and dad does.
So then we'd be asking, rather than five hundred and ninety-three, we'd be asking a hundred and forty-eight thousand out of it. One forty-eight, so then you can subtract five, nine, three. That's one forty-eight, that's four forty-five, minus four hundred and forty-five. We'd be at nine, two, zero, four.
Yeah.
If we did that. So we're taking, we'd be paying a quarter of this project, quarter of this project out of the landfill. Ha, almost half of it comes from the land, the, the gas fund. And then we use available fund balance in there to come up with it. And then the people's rates are gonna have to go up.
But, and that sounds like a great argument. But because you're taking money out of there, there's less chance you can take money out of there to pay for coalers.
Pay for what?
To pay for any coalers you do. You're gonna have to come up with the money. If you end up doing coalers, you're gonna have to find the money somewhere. And you're kinda just spending it on the wastewater plant, which means you can't spend it on coal. So the money is all the money. It all comes out of the same pool, you might as well say.
Yes, ma'am.
It's about a hundred. Yeah, a hundred and forty-ish.
I ain't spending on anything.
Well, I figured for flood control, the next flood we have and what it does to our roads up in Trout Lake is probably gonna be where that goes.
Well, it could. I mean, they call it flood control. It doesn't have anything to do with flood. It is money that we get for flooded lands.
Oh, it's flooded lands on the Columbia.
Columbia. It's a, like a payment in lieu of taxes. It's a pill. So, but we're. So, but we're, they haven't hardly paid anything. I don't know, there's as much flooded lands as there ever were. I don't know.
I don't know, Trout Lake could flood again.
Yeah.
Glenwood Valley could flood again.
How it all works, but we get a share of that. But it's not, it's not much.
That, that would get rid of my indigestion about the landfill fund dollars. I, I still have to see P U D come up in there, two hundred and fifty, that's, I'm appalled at that number.
Well, that's what we asked. We asked for two fifty.
That's not what I asked, that's what the chairman asked. I asked for the full fund and for Golden Dale to be funded by own.
Right, but we'd already sit, we'd already submit, that submitted those in. You wanted the, you're the one who asked for Golden Dale to be submitted in the first place.
That's before I came up with the idea to fund this one. And so we at least had a project to submit.
Yeah. I'm good. I'm good with that approach. Yeah.
So you want me to shoot for the two ninety or the two fifty?
Well, I mean, you, I don't know. I mean, you can ask. I mean, you can do it. It's not, again, I, I want these things built. They need to get done. And I think Dallas Port needs to get done in twenty-three, because the five ninety-three in twenty twenty-four will be six, seven fifty.
Well, hopefully prices come back.
Well.
We're seeing forty percent escalation right now that, that can't.
I mean, it is possible that maybe we'll see some, that we'll actually have money to save. Yeah, I agree. Yeah. It pretty much only goes one way. The best we can hope for is that it just.
In two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine.
There was, we did, that is true.
You know, we've done a lot of roads.
Built a lot of roads because they were so cheap.
That's what I think is gonna happen too, so.
Like you.
May not be twenty twenty-three, it might be twenty twenty-four.
Not only was roads cheap, but when fuel prices go down, you know, you can get a lot more asphalt done.
Yeah.
Lower bids, cause they're.
Cause they're hungry.
They're competing again.
I mean, some of these guys. Yeah, I would say my advice to the chair is, I will, I will defer to the chair, but I would ask, no, I would go back and say, we'll agree to fund all of your projects, but we want fifty percent of the Dallas Port, so whatever that number is, two eighty. And, or we'll see a year from now. And prices will be cheaper. You're gonna save all this money.
It's not gonna be a year from now, they would go back and meet again in three weeks and.
Okay, well, that was, I wanted to have the conversation with you gentlemen, because, you know, I know I wa, I walked in hoping for four fifty is what I had sitting on my thing.
Right.
Well, I had funded, I had allocated everything, but all out of O'Dea.
We asked for four fifty or five hundred or whatever. And we're getting kind of half.
My notes are worthless. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, anything else on, uh, board pending?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Uh, multiple things. Uh, Superior Court litigators.
Do you, we wanna take a ten minute recess? Five minute recess?
Do you need one?
Yeah, I could. Yeah. If you don't mind.
Yeah, you're the chair.
All right. Uh, well, I would just take a motion to recess for ten minutes. I could. There've been a motion to second to recess for ten minutes, we will be back.
Sorry.
We federally do. I see a mic going up and down. Clickety clickers.
All right, sorry Dan.
All right, so I'm assuming nobody heard any part of my story. Um, so with the litigators, uh, it's, it's my interpretation that the two that we currently have for Superior Court are the only two that are currently in the county. It is my belief that when people see us posting, they're, they see the wage, but they're also assuming this is some forty hours a week job, and they don't wanna relocate. I think if we do a better job explaining in our ad, you might say, or, or, of, that we're willing to, because I, I don't agree with what we're currently paying at whatever it is, four twenty-five roughly an hour.
It used to be a hundred and, it averaged out at a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty.
And Superior's getting about a hu, or, district's getting about a hundred and fifty.
Before all the changes, the law.
And that's my point. If it's only a hundred and sixty an hour, that's all fine and dandy when the courts were busy and you were working full time. But when you're not working forty hours a week, it doesn't, you, you now adjust that hourly wage at four hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, which you might as well be working in Beverly Hills for that. You are now the highest paid defense attorneys in the state of Washington for that. Um, just because we only have two of them. It, that's unfortunate. So I think we need to bring that number with our billable hours, you might say, of what we're currently seeing. Uh, we're forecasting that they're gonna work X number of hours a month. And we put it in the ad that we forecast you're gonna be working X number of ads, hours per month. We're gonna pay you X number of dollars per month, which is a forecasted hourly rate of three hundred bucks an hour, or whatever number we decide on there. I think the four twenty-five that they're at currently is way too high, and I think their ask of six hundred and whatnot is borderline extortion.
Just borderline?
I was trying to be nice. The taxpayers have to pay for this, so yeah. But I don't think if we lower it down, it is a harder job than district court. District court is, you know, somebody got trouble for stealing Snickers bar at the I G A. Um, you know, it, this, this is a harder gig, so I, I could see it being more than the hundred and fifty. I do think you're gonna have to.
A hundred at district court.
I thought we raised it to one fifty.
No, it went from seventy-five to a hundred.
Um, I, we have time. I think you can shoot low and shoot out a number that says something like one fifty or two hundred. I just think that's such a proverbial cut from where we have now, that I don't think anybody's gonna buy. Because ideally, what I think we need to do is recruit somebody from out of the area that's, cause competition, we all know, free market system, you have competition and somebody new comes in and bids, uh, and says, whoa, wait a minute, this is really kind of a lucrative gig. I'll come up and do it that one day a week from Hood River, Skamani County, or whatever else. And the two we currently have are gonna find themselves out of the job for two years, until the next contract comes due. But when that happens, there will, both contracts will be lower. Right now, uh, it's, it's no different than our paving the asphalt for one point four million dollars in the courthouse. Parking lots over there, there's only one company available and your bid's gonna be high. Right now, we have one company available and the bid is high. Um, if we make the bid more realistic, uh, explain it better when we go out to bid, so that people know how many hours they can expect to travel. Maybe they don't even have to relocate. Maybe they just know they're working in town every Thursday. Uh, but for nine thousand dollars a month to work in town every Thursday is a pretty good gig. So I think we need to come up with a number amount, and my number amount ideally off the top of my head is three hundred. And explain it better on estimated hours that you're gonna have to work, which estimated pay, estimated hourly rate. So anybody reading it can go, wow, that's actually not too bad.
So what happens if you say the estimated hours are this and it's three hundred, but then they show up and they, and the docket gets full, and now they're suddenly putting in a bunch more hours? They're gonna want the difference of that. When you say three hundred, they're gonna expect three hundred.
That's what I'm, I'm, I mean, my approach is sort of a.
Very.
Well, no, it's the same idea, except I wouldn't, I would let people do their own calculations as far as, it is basically three hundred dollars. I mean, they're getting paid right now about four hundred and fifty dollars an hour. It's a set contract, it's a dollar figure.
Right.
And then somehow we have, so what I would suggest we do is we fly it, meaning we advertise it. We don't ask for a number. We say, here's what we're willing to pay total. Here's the hours worked over the last two years.
Right. Do your own math.
Do your own math, they're getting about four fifty and it's, you know, so the current contract is two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for an annual contract that happens to work out to be about four hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Are you, are you, uh?
So I would say, pick the number.
But you're not advocating for the two hundred and sixteen or whatever.
No, I would go lower, cause I think it's too high.
Right.
I think it's too high. I think four hundred and fifty dollars an hour is, is ludicrous. What's the number should be? I don't know. Maybe you start at, you know, one fifty or one seventy-five or something, uh, where it's, it has to be enough to make it so somebody.
But I said, I would like that number to be right around the three hundred and then we, that's the base number we use.
So.
I'm flexible.
Have you written, hired a, privately hired an attorney in the gorge recently?
No, I haven't had a need.
Well, I have.
Walked you right into that.
Thanks.
I haven't since my last campaign, so.
That was two campaigns.
Or two campaigns ago, actually, that's true.
But I mean, three hundred an hour, you're hiring the best attorney in the gorge for three hundred, three.
But you have to remember, only very few attorneys can do that job. They can all write a will, they can all defend you on your civil case about, you know, mowing your yard or whatever your civil thing was, but not all of them can make a defense case in a Superior Court. And that has to mean something as far as pay. Because same deal, there's, you know, fifty mechanics in the city. Are you gonna take car to every single one of them? Are you gonna pay a little more for the one that actually is qualified to work on it?
Well, I guess, here's the other side, you know, we just raised, so you have to think there's two sides of this. There's prosecut, prosecution side. We want forty hours a week out of you. For a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And now you wanna have somebody else on the opposite side working five hours a week for the same amount?
The, I've ran my three hundred number through various sources. Um, and you're the first pushback. If I explained that good enough.
Nope. But then again, of course you'll get pushed, everybody else will love it. Who wouldn't apply it?
Well, the only thing I'm looking at too is just historically, we never had, I mean, going back ten.
Two fifty or something.
No, no, I mean, going back, again, it wasn't hourly. It was, but it was, there was a calculation going on, but the contract was always.
And that's the way it should be.
You know, it used to be three people and it was still, it was about a hundred and seven. It was one fifty, it was never less than that.
I'm just saying, we know how many hours they put in. We need to figure out what we think that hourly rate should be, whether it's a hundred and fifty or three hundred or whatever number. Do the math and that's your base rate like you're talking about. We just have to figure out what the base rate is. That's where we come up with it, is figuring out what that hourly rate.
I just don't think you're gonna get, I don't think anybody, I mean, we have time, we can try, but I don't think you're gonna get anybody if you're too cheap on the number. People are not, the only way we have competition is somebody has to come from the outside.
Right.
It sounds like there's only two people in this county that are qualified and able to do this job, so that, they're it.
Outside of the prosecutor's office.
Outside of the prosecutor's office.
If they wanted to quit and do something less paid or less.
And so the only way you're gonna do it is you're gonna have to entice somebody from outside and to do that, it has to be lucrative.
That's my argument with the three hundred.
Right.
Everywhere.
Oregon, there's the shortage. Forge, I mean, in the metro area, like.
I guess I'm looking at this and this, that we're paying, you know, four hundred and thirty to fifty dollars an hour, and we have a two and a half million dollar budget shortfall. And we're paying two hundred and.
Well, let's make sure we're using accurate numbers. We just talked about, the two and a half million dollar shortfall was including the.
No.
Bad numbers.
All those other numbers and we keep moving stuff around, but.
No, no, I was working up four million all in.
Well. Anyway. It doesn't matter what our budget shortfall is, if we have a service that we have to, we have to do it. I mean, I don't know what happens if we don't, if it comes January first, and the deal is, we go and advertise, nobody does, and the only offer we have is for twelve thousand dollars a month.
What if the only offer we have is for one point two million?
Each, right?
Do you, do you have to do that?
I don't know.
Um.
What happens?
Would the state rent us a few and, and haul them down here? You know, uh, what is the, we need to know what that scenario is, but I think we have time to shoot out a new.
Right.
Number like you're saying, with the base number.
You know, what's that number?
And see what it can accomplish. And in the meantime, look at for what's, what are our choices? Or do we have to accept or?
I asked, you know, the last time, I said, do we want to try to negotiate with these people first? And the answer was, no, this is extortion, we're just gonna say no to it. So I'd hate to run the same thing again, expecting a different result, unless you're willing to say, based on the numbers, this is what we're willing to pay. And you could butt it with a, you know, here's, here's our low end estimate, it's by hour, here's the low end of what we think you might do, and here's the high end. If you're bumping these numbers, this is the situation.
Well, I think if you give them a low end and a high end, they're gonna, yeah. I was gonna say, the two are gonna come in at the high end. But somebody else may come in just a smidge less. Um, but, I don't know.
But if you go back and so, say you ran it, you know, if you say you're running it for three hundred an hour, and we have a year like twenty eighteen, you wouldn't be into this two hundred thousand dollars, you'd be into this five hundred dollars.
Well, that's why it's, I'm not, it's a flat, it's a flat.
Right.
That's the only thing I'm interested in.
Correct.
Cause I want a number, and if it works out, if they're super efficient and there's nothing going on in the court and they make three hundred dollars an hour or four hundred dollars an hour, I don't care. Because they could have also have been where they're slammed and now they're making a hundred dollars an hour. It's a flat, I wanna know what the number is.
Right.
Not, so I don't care what they, what I do.
I wanna base the number.
The number on what's a reasonable.
What's a reasonable expectation for how many hours you're gonna have to work?
Right. Is it reasonable?
That we think based on the last two years.
The last two years.
The only data we can use.
We don't know. I think, you know, five hours a week is, I think that's an anomaly. I can't imagine that you can, I, I just, I mean, I know that's what the numbers show. That's what's there, but I keep thinking, something's not getting done. If you can, if you, well, I have every expectation that, you know, I would, that you should at least put in ten hours a week towards this job.
That's something we have any control over.
No, we don't. And again, it's, it's the, it is what it is, it's, you know, what if they're only working one hour?
Right, but you, I guess.
Well, now they're earning four thousand dollars an hour.
That with the two attorneys that are currently under contract, if they don't get this contract, they're unemployed. There's not really a side job there.
Yeah, they have some stuff.
Not enough to feed the.
Not. Not the bread and butter. This is definitely the bread and butter.
Correct. So. Yeah, I I definitely can't sign on what they gave, so I just.
So do you wanna, how do you wanna run it? Do you wanna run the same contract? Because it sounds like Dave, you were saying you want the same thing. You just bought a better price, which.
More explanation.
Yeah, I want to advertise the number because how we've done it in the past is we didn't put a num, we didn't publish a number.
Or how many hours?
Said you, we need services, send us a, your proposal.
And they're assuming forty hours a week.
Two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And we're like, okay, we like, oh, that's terrible, but we got one bid.
I think the Skamania Hood River County people look at that and go, I can't work forty hours a week. I got a side gig.
Right.
So I think if you advertise it saying that we expect or forecast or.
Or the past two years are this, these are the number of hours.
Ten hours a week and we're willing to pay. Six thousand a month or whatever.
Right.
Number you.
Yeah, maybe make it per month, whatever it is.
It it could be a yearly, it could be whatever, but just so the math works out.
Right.
It yearly or monthly so they can figure out.
I don't know.
The paper by themselves.
I'd be fine running it for a hundred and eighty three thousand dollars total.
What is that?
That's point eight five. So that's fifteen percent off because I'm looking, we have to, everybody has to save ten per, at least ten percent in order to balance this budget.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I look at the top down.
Try to keep it fair along. I I can.
Nope.
Is that two on per hour? That probably only.
All depends on the number of hours.
Well, I was, I was gonna go with, my opening number was a hundred and seventy five total for the contract.
Say, I've, you're, you're both right in the ballpark. I am.
Hundred and eighty, would you say one eighty?
One eighty three.
Okay, that's a random number. I would keep up guessing as far as like.
I took, I took it at fifteen percent off the current rate, two hundred and sixteen thousand.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I guess that looks like uh we thought about the number.
Yeah.
More than one seventy five.
A hundred and eighty three thousand.
Six hundred, period.
Six hundred.
Not six oh one.
But so here's another question, like right now, what happens when they're both conflicted out? And somebody from the outside has to come in. Does that come out of theirs?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think so. Which is still.
Again, is, is, right, but it's an argument of at what rate are they paying? And is that why they're not getting any conflict attorneys? Cause they're only paying it a hundred dollars an hour. Right, that's a whole nother argument.
I don't know, whoever that guy emailed that, you know, I looked at that email and I was like, hey, does he want the job of setting all our court people and all that? Okay. You're running that one to bed, right?
When we. When, when we have to start setting court people, is that only for superior or is that districts as well? All of it. Let's just appear, right, which I'm saying shouldn't be much workload. If it was districts too, it would be a lot of workload. If it's just superior.
I don't know.
Based on how many hours we're working out on that sheet.
All I know is is that we have to come up with savings everywhere we can or the ship is gonna sink.
Right.
And saying three hundred an hour is a good way to shake, sink the ship.
So I don't know what math that works out to. Your one eighty three, whatever.
I don't, I don't go, I'm fine with the approach. Again, I'm more worried about the bottom line.
Right.
As far as if it's two sixteen now, it should be something less than that.
Right, well, and I I also wanted, I I think it's very important for the competition. The, the hope of competition.
There's no competition. That's why, that's how you started this conversation.
In other counties. That if they have a guesstimate on how many hours of work. And then that number. Both of them need to be there because if you just have that number, they're gonna think it's a forty hour a week job.
Right.
Uh which comes.
No, it needs to be part of the ad, needs to be here was the, here's the number la, the last two years, here's the number.
Here's the hours worked in twenty twenty, nineteen, if you got them.
Right.
You know, twenty four, every year we got, give them four years.
I would say uh an amount less than a hundred and eighty three thousand six hundred.
Okay. Well, I like a kind of random number.
I was gonna say, I think.
It does make it seem like there was some calculation.
Some mythology or.
Which is fifteen percent off the current contract.
Not an additional thirty three percent more.
Right.
I don't know. We gave him a shot across the bow. We'll see how they handle it.
Yeah. They can respond or not.
Um so anyway, that's what I had on that one.
Okay, next.
Uh updating the burn bad border ordinance, our clerk came up with some new language that she emailed out. What I would like to see in that language is exceptions. For, cause we still don't have barbecues in there. That was the main point of back when I was sitting in the audience. Of updating that burn ban ordinance was barbecues. And to me, I want to see barbecues and pizza pizzas exempt. So that we don't have to do a variance every year because after that I'm gonna be a no on variances for everything.
But couldn't you take care of that in the burn ban language itself?
Correct, well, maybe, but that's what I'm saying, and you burn ban organs.
What's that?
I mean.
Because I think you're gonna see a whole ton of, I need a variance because of my religious belief or I need a variance because I'm atheist. Or I need a variance for this and I don't want to be giving some people. Exceptions or allowances to break laws that other people can't have. So if we're gonna make it variances. For pizza oven, put it in the language of pizza ovens are exempt from the burn ban. And then you don't have to worry about a variance.
So you're gonna allow charcoal barbecues?
That was, well, I don't know it's charcoal, but there was something I think I thought it was.
Cause as long as the.
There was something with Jeff about barbecues.
Though that's charcoal, barbecues are not allowed. As long as the flame can be turned off at any given time.
But there was something that he needed to add to it about barbecues and that's why I'm saying before we vote on it, we need to check and see what that was. But whatever exemptions we're gonna write, I want those in there so that there are already exceptions and we don't have to write a variance for it. So that way I'm not, we shouldn't have to do a variance. If you want to put language in there to give yourself a variance, that's fine. But.
Well, I just think that I I think there always should be the ability with the correct criteria. Cause I think this, these are not, I mean, we write a couple of them.
We apply for.
For variances all the time.
Right, and I'm not opposed to that.
There is a set criteria. It has to be in the public interest in blah, 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 all the stuff about. And it isn't like now it's super simple to do. You gotta go to the fire department. The fire chief has to sign off. Here's all the conditions. And the, the reason why I'm always, I'm okay with it when it goes through that is the point of the ban. Is not because we don't want people to have fires. It's because there's a danger, there's a public safety issue. And if there's a way to mitigate that, well, it's in that there isn't a reasonable amount of danger, then.
I guess my argument is when, when I read a burn ban, I don't think about setting a. Petitioning the county for a variance based off my personal opinions or beliefs or whatever. And I think that is. The old way of thinking. The new way of thinking is that you're gonna get twenty of those a year. And if one of those starts a fire, you're on that.
I don't know.
So I would much rather just keep the burn ban in effect. And if they want to have their own little fire, they can do it at their own risk. And I didn't say yes to it.
So you just want people to do things illegally and we get more. But then we get more, more complaints. I mean. Like, I like how there's, there's other ways. You can tie it to the IFPL levels. So your fire protection levels, if if you can still run a chainsaw out in the woods. And you can do all these other things, but you can't have a little campfire outside on your grass in the middle of.
Right, and and I think.
Where's the logic in that?
Right, your argument is a hundred percent sound. It's just ninety nine percent of the public doesn't know what those other levels are. So they want to set the fire chiefs, want to set specific dates so the general public isn't confused.
Well, education is something we're all about. We're all into.
Alright, more work to be had on burn man ordinance. Got it.
Hey, what do you got next? Well, I'm, I like, I like the language that Lee came up with um as a stopgap because it's not us. It's Jeff that's working on the bor, burn ban ordinance and we all know how long it may be until we see that.
Okay. Um, the other thing I want to do is I would still like to have a workshop. With all parties pertaining to our airport. So that I can fully understand what the heck is going on with the cluster going on down there. And if that needs to be a Tuesday, fine. If that needs to be a Thursday, fine. If that needs to be in Dallasport, fine. But I would like to see the, the, the. Airport board, uh airport management invite to wastewater or Dallasport Water District invite to city. And see if we can get to the bottom of the contract issues. Uh and or hopefully that it gets me to understanding the. Uh communication problems that are going on.
So. Right now, uh we've had a meeting with prosecutor Cannell. Uh city manager and the uh city attorney and. They should have the information with the money that we spent. Um to write the letter to the FAA trying to get the FAA to buy off on the transfer of the water right through their rules. And the prosecuting attorney, last I checked, believes that he feels that the two of them can write that letter versus. The attorney for the city of the Dells wanted to send that out to a professional attorney who works with the FAA revenue diversion policy. And so that's, that's where we're at. Um we were asked.
That's new information for me, so.
We were asked to bring, to, to get more information and I got information from John Grimm um and Public Works and got that forwarded on. The, the, the real crux of the matter is will the FAA bless? That transfer of the water. If the FAA won't bless that, then they can deem that a revenue diversion. Uh and then we'd be breaking their policy, which would then put all of our future grants in jeopardy.
Are they?
Kind of like a finding.
Right, but the transfer of the water right. Was essentially for a cost. So yes, there's a value of the water right, but there was also a value to what Dallasport gave back. Uh Dallasport wastewater gave back.
Wait, what? Not wastewater.
Water district gave back. That's a third times charm, right? With correction in the middle. Um and that's all fine and dandy, but is the FAA. Deeming the value of that water right, what it was when that math was done twelve years ago? Or they deeming the value of the water right, what it is today? And if there is inflation on the water right. I would say Dallasport Water District has an argument that they own the inflation on the water. Um because we, we traded it to them twelve years ago.
We have not.
Officially write the contract isn't fulfilled yet, blah, blah. But that was the agreement. Is we're giving you this water right that's worth.
As I understand.
Two dollars and you're gonna put in two dollars of the infrastructure. Kind of a scenario. Is that the way FAA is approaching this situation or not? And those are questions I don't have answers to.
That's, you'll, you won't know that answer because you'd have to get that from the FAA. What we did is is. We hired Aspect Consulting to do the valuation of the water right, which.
Twelve years ago or today?
He should have done the value. I haven't seen it.
Well, you had to ask him for which one you were having him do.
Was I understand it, he had to, he should have done the valuation for the time of and the current valuation. Because the FAA is going to say that water right belongs to the airport currently. That is the airport's asset.
At today's value, not ten years ago's value when they made the contract.
Well, then what you can say is, is what was the value of what was given or what was created? And now what's its current value? What's the inflation on that? You could do the inflation both ways. Okay, it's not, not rocket science. I think the issue is, is that, that everyone at the time, according to Commissioner Soder, knew that. We were trying to transferring this water right and it was a screaming deal for the value of that water for Dallasport. But both sides were winning in the end. Some of that is monetary value. Some of that is we don't want to be our own water district value. Um there was, there was other wins that are just not monetary in terms of revenue diversion. And making that case to the FAA, if I know the FAA, there's sticklers for everything.
Well, my, I guess I'd say my original ask still stands. I would like everybody to be in the same room, have a workshop so everybody can be on the same page.
But the problem is, is so we're, we're walking down this path, looking for the answer, yes. If the answer is yes, everything goes nice and smooth. If we get together, are we gonna be talking about our assumption that the answer is yes? Or do we get together when the answer is no, or if it is no? And now you've got, well, with one door shut. And now we're gonna have to get creative in order to get this done. I've come up with a lot of creative ways in order to get it done. But we don't have the answer of yes or no yet. Finality written from the FAA and that might be another three months. So if we get together, what are we gonna be talking about? Cause anything we talk about is just gonna spawn another thousand rumors that people have no idea what's going on.
Opinion, Mr. Quiet over there?
I'm not sure. I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea to have everybody in the same room. I do worry about how much. How pre, I think it would be useful for you as far as to get the information and have everybody hear it at the same time. But I do think. I'm not sure how much productivity is gonna come out of it because the, the one. The biggest party that is the wild card is not gonna be there, which is the FAA and. I don't think they're, you know, and maybe the purpose of it is to just, cause there's gonna be people. City councilors are, most of them are different. They're not the same folks. They don't have the, they're in the same position you're in. So I don't, I don't think that's a bad idea. I think it's good, but do we think we're gonna come out of that is we have all the answers? We're not really gonna have any answers. It's just gonna be more, do we all kind of understand where we're at and are we all on the same page?
Right, that's all.
As far as what we're trying to do. And are we all okay with the approach that we're taking? Cause ultimately it's the city and the county that decides. The direction that we go. It's, you know, we're the owners. So I would be fine with that because there's, again, I'm not, um. Most of those city council members I've never met at this point. Um, cause they're, they're switched out. You know, I've met with the mayor a few times.
So and I would throw.
Seems like a.
Everybody, you know, mayor, city attorney, prosecutors, who shows is who shows, but.
But are we, I mean. We're gonna create more confusion for sure. Coming out of this because people will want, well, what's the answer? Well, the prosecuting attorney and the city's attorney are trying to get the answer. And they're working together to try to get that answer from the FAA. Now, if that answer from the FAA comes back and it's not favorable, well, we've got a huge can of worms. But it's taken us ten years to get here. Because it's not an easy open and shut thing. And the water district is inserted themselves into the middle of it. Uh with the FAA. But again, you're just, you're causing confusion in a lot of things. And that's, there's, as you can tell, a lot of confusion around it. And anybody who says water rights are simple things. Well, whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting over.
Yeah. And I would, you know, I would clarify, at least from my perspective, my recollection was. It was equitable ten years ago. It was not a screaming deal for the water district. It was, it was fair is what. That's, that's, um, I just want to be clear about that. That was not, I didn't think the. The water district was getting more than they were giving. It was, there was, there was value for what it was worth.
We didn't forget a valuation on the water rights ten years ago.
No, but we also didn't.
Cause we were, we, it's really easy to separate this because there's, there's the construction that went on at the airport. Right, there was the water tank and the booster pump and all that and the construction that went on at the airport. And, you know.
But are we doing calculations on if the, to be able to build the business park and to provide the fire flow and have the infrastructure? What it would have cost for us to build it onsite and just to be completely separated? It's not what they paid. Gets, would have been significantly more. So that's, you know, is it the value of money you didn't have? So that's, you know, is it the value of money you didn't have to spend versus, so I just wanna make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
Right, and I wanna make sure we're comparing it to not what the water right is worth today, which is four times more.
Which, I mean, you could argue if it's not, it's the info, you know, the infrastructure, there, maybe there's been more. Inflation in the infrastructure than there has been in the water right. I don't know.
That's, cause the water right likely, likely went from twenty-five hundred an acre foot in two thousand and ten to maybe three thousand acres foot today. I mean, that's not a whole lot of inflation versus our forty percent more.
Yeah, in the last year.
For, you know, piping.
I have to look at how many people on Zoom and how many people we bored to death in the last twenty minutes.
Oh, there's still quite a few.
Wow.
Yeah, that's all.
It's just an exciting conversation.
Yeah, um.
It's a board of three. If it sees merit, then let's move forward. If it doesn't, then.
Well, I think.
What's up?
The first thing to do is be to ask the PA if he thinks it would have merit and value, bringing everybody together. Cause we'll of course want him to be there. Because I'm sure that the city will have counsel there. So if they have counsel, we need to have counsel.
Yeah, oh, was that a comment? Oh, yeah. Oh, no, you always.
I mean, my personal thing is, is let's, let's give the professionals with law degrees time to try to get this worked out. And if it works out, then, then we, we've, we can execute the contract. We can start the process of transferring the water right. We can transfer, you know, the, you know, there's a lot of things changing the place of use. I mean, you've gotta go through two separate processes even after you get that done. If the FAA buys off. Do you have anything else on your?
Those were the things I asked for.
You have anything?
No.
And we thought it was gonna be an early day.
I didn't think.
How are, how are you doing? Is there anything else for the good of the order? Rob says.
Okay.
Rob's had enough.
Chair, I'd make a motion to adjourn our regular meeting until nine thirty AM, uh, Thursday. I think that's August or July, September. I already threw my thing away. Uh, this, September first at nine thirty for scheduled, uh, budget workshops.
Second the motion.
Um, discussion, I would like to say, uh, thank you to Ms. Ibbi for all of the time you have given the county. It means a lot. Um, and we will miss you. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
You didn't even say goodbye to everybody on Zoom land today. You still got a minute?